Moving on, do we have a report from the Board of Commissioners liaison?
No report, Chair.
Oh, I always do this. And now I'm going to go back to public participation. This is the time during our meeting where you get one minute to address the board. You'll get three minutes at our regular meeting at seven o'clock. Would anybody like to address the board? Anybody online? All right, moving on. No report, Ashley? Okay, now we'll move on to our discussion items. First up, we have Food Gatherers for an update, and I will welcome to the floor Eileen Spring.
I'm much taller on Zoom than I am live. Okay, I'm here with my colleague Markell. We're gonna both speak to you. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this in person. It's a little wobbly, but thank you. Thank you so much for making time on our agenda. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, and then if I could add, we're limiting presentations to ten to fifteen minutes because we have so many. Thank you. I forgot to add that earlier.
I will talk fast. Oh, yes, please. Yes, you can. Thank you. That's important. So I'm here on behalf of Food Gatherers. We're the food rescue and food bank program serving Washtenaw County, as many of you know. And we are here to update you on current trends and food insecurity happening in our community, most directly related to the ending of pandemic health benefits. And so just wanted if you could go to the next one, thank you. Just to sort of set the table a little bit for us, we have an established network of one hundred and seventy different programs throughout Washtenaw County, a variety of partners, small church-based partners, sometimes ones in large institutions like Eastern Michigan University, and a variety of service models. Our work is to help make sure that anyone in need of food assistance can access it on weekends and the evening in ways that are accessible to them and meet their diverse needs. One of the direct service programs that we, excuse me, I'm sorry, can you go to the next slide? I'm used to having my own clicker, so sorry, I'm a little thrown off. On the zip code, hopefully you guys can see the slide up close. So you can see that's a close-up of zip codes in Washtenaw County that have the estimated rate of folks who are designated as food insecure. And I think it's helpful to sort of see that. Really, since two thousand and nine, as we were dealing with the Great Recession, we began to think a little differently about our work and to prioritize working with our partners in such a way to increase their capacity to distribute food, more food and more healthy food. And so really, for the last almost twenty years, we've been investing in our partner agencies' capacity to have coolers and freezers and to adjust quickly to changes quickly in demand as what happened in recession. And I mentioned that because it was that kind of work that really enabled us to adjust as quickly as we did as a network to the pandemic when it hit. Because there we saw even more dramatic increases in demand really, really quickly. And we also have continued to prioritize the communities in our county that have the highest rates of food insecurity. And that is four eight one nine seven, four eight one nine eight. A lot of our resources in terms of food and support go to those communities. Sorry, so I'm having a slightly allergic reaction to your building or the pollen. So that prioritization has been ongoing. There are some positive things that came out of the pandemic in a way, in terms of innovations. It really accelerated our network's ability to deal with something we've always been trying to deal with, which is how do you reach people that can't get to you, right? Folks that have transportation barriers. And obviously with COVID, all sorts of new people had barriers. And so through our network of food banks nationally, we're able to secure partnership with DoorDash that is ongoing, that has helped address that for many, many people. That was a lifesaver. We also were able to write a grant to the USDA for a TFAP Reach and Resiliency Grant that enabled to have some of those solutions for rural communities. So we wrote a grant that directly benefits and gave a van to Aidan Mylan for them to do pop-up distributions and also get food to people in their community where DoorDash is not active, right? DoorDash tends to be active in generally more urban areas. And that program also helps out Manchester too. And so they're doing pop-ups and getting to people. And the other thing we were able to do is more recently get a grant-funded addition to our staff of someone who's fluent in Spanish that is helping us create more access to people who need assistance, who only speak Spanish or who prefer speaking in Spanish. So those are some positive things, but really the most positive thing that came out of the pandemic is I think that we, our safety net network really showed their resiliency and adaptability. And if you compare what happened in our county to other communities, what we saw in other communities, and you saw it on television, people lined up for hours to get in line at a food bank to distribute one box of food. We didn't have to do that here. And it's not because we couldn't have. We didn't need to because we kept these agencies open. They adapted and they figured out how to do all sorts of crazy things in the early days of the pandemic, which we won't go into right now, but essentially having no touch distributions, et cetera. And all of that was really based on the work that we had done for decades, that they had the resources to stay open and to quickly adapt. And so, and that also talks to your investments, honestly, in the safety net over the years that kept all the shelters open, et cetera, and adapting. So moving to the next slide, please. We're going to talk mainly about, oh, thank you, mainly about the partners that we serve. I mentioned we have one hundred and seventy different partners throughout the county that we serve. We also do some really important direct programs that we run at Food Gatherers. And one of them that I'll mention, since it is operated in the Delana Center, the county-owned building, is our Food Gatherers Community Kitchen that is open every day of the year in the Delana Center to serve people there. The pandemic has brought numerous challenges, as you can imagine, to congregate settings that again have quickly been, that we've been able to adapt. I leave this slide up here really just to remind us, and I know you are reminded every day that the rate of homelessness, number of people experiencing homelessness in our county has increased. And families with young children, there's more of them than there ever was when I started this work nearly thirty years ago. And there is no, whenever there is homelessness or housing insecurity, there is also food insecurity. And so they're interlinked, right? So we're proud to be part of those organizations that are providing services to this constituency. But even when we're solving it, right, through housing supports, supportive housing, food is still a critical part of the programs that keeps people housed and keeps them to be able to afford their rent. Oh, I can do it now. If I could just move it. Okay. Great. You'll be more graceful.
I don't know. Hello, everyone. I'm Markell with Food Gatherers. And I'm going to talk to you briefly about food insecurity and then who we're serving in the county through our network of partners. Here are some estimates of the number of people experiencing food insecurity in our county. It's nearly forty thousand people, about ten percent of Washtenaw County. But I do want to point out that, just like with many other issues, we're going to see racial disparities in the rates of food insecurity. And we see disproportionate rates of food insecurity among the black population in Washtenaw County, as well as Hispanic Latino, compared to the white population. And I also want to point out that thirty-four percent of people experiencing food insecurity are likely ineligible for SNAP. So that means when they're struggling, when they got an unexpected car repair bill or something that comes up, the only resource they have is going to be the charitable network that's supported by the partnerships with Food Gatherers. Let's see, it works. Okay, so who are we reaching through our network of partners and our direct services? This has taken us several years to figure out how to make these estimates and these calculations. About six years ago, we started investing in software and providing it that at no cost to our network of partners. We use a program currently called Link to Feed. This allows us to understand who we're serving and how they're accessing services. That data, along with other data we get from our partners, allows us to present a picture of who we're reaching. And in last year's fiscal year, because this year hasn't closed for us, we estimate we reached fifty-five thousand unique individuals. So that's counting every individual in every household only once, regardless of the number of times they access services. If we count each individual and each household, every time they access services at all of our different partners and services, that's more than eight hundred thousand individual visits. And that's more than enough to fill the big house for all of the home games. So really, clear demonstration of the reach and the impact, both at an individual level, but also at a frequency level. Who are we serving, though? This is another really important question. It's, of course, important to know how many people we're serving, but really, who are we serving to get at some of these disparities? One of the things we want to point out here is the race ethnicity. Of course, this is self-declared by individuals that are comfortable disclosing that. And there's a bunch of numbers at the bottom of the screen here, but what those purple numbers on your left are indicating are, who are we reaching? W stands for white, B stands for black, and H stands for Hispanic shorthand for their race and ethnicities that they declare when they're signing in, et cetera. And so the numbers in parentheses are the number of people who live in Washtenaw County. Of course, being a metropolitan area, we have some people here accessing services, but the majority of people we serve live in Washtenaw County. The numbers in the middle in blue are the number of people experiencing food insecurity broken down by race. Of course, it's oversimplified here, but that's an important way for us to understand, are we at the right scale to meet all the neighbors? All their needs. Are we serving every neighbor? Of course, we don't have the ability to say that, but we do know we have enough partnerships and services. And based off of the number of people we're serving, that we have the right scale in place. And now it's up to improving services and addressing additional barriers, improving outreach, improving services for neighbors based off of their feedback. And you can also see the zip code household information there. About half of the people we serve live in four eight one nine seven, four eight one nine eight. And that, again, as Eileen mentioned, is based off of our our plan to work with people and work with organizations based in that area, based off of historical data and the rates of food insecurity there. I want to show you briefly, this was a snapshot I took last week before our May numbers were finalized. The final point on the right there for May, it's actually even higher when I just looked at it today, now that we have more numbers from our sites in May. But as expected, we are seeing more people coming and more visits due to the end of the SNAP emergency allotments. So there were pandemic-related benefits that the federal government provided, both to food banks, but also to individuals that were immensely helpful. Those ended in February. That was not a choice by the state of Michigan. That was a national end of that extra resource for families. Now, when they run out of money for food, they're going to come to us and they're going to come to us more frequently. And we're already seeing that play out. And there's a couple other things happening, other pandemic-related benefits that we're keeping our eye on, recertification of Medicaid, et cetera, because we know that those are going to impact the families we're serving.
Thank you. So I'm giving you a snapshot of where our food sources come from. And this is data for the year that ended in June of last year, our fiscal year. So we were currently still in our fiscal year. So that big old cabbage there, fifty-one percent of donated, that's primarily what we get from food rescue program, right? This is where we go to grocery stores and farmers and get food that's wholesome, but still it's, you know, not going to be sold. So we quickly redistribute it. Just to give you a sense of one of the ways the pandemic has changed stuff, is prior in two thousand and nineteen, before the pandemic, sixty-eight percent of the total food we distributed was from that source, right? Meaning it was local people feeding local people with our community surplus, so to speak. So now, right in that year that ended last June, sixteen percent of our food was purchased food. And that's food that we still get good details, you know, good deals on, but it's to fill the gaps. We have a nutrition policy. There are certain things that are hard to get. Sometimes it's value-added processing, meaning we got a bunch of apples donated, but we don't have the packaging, so we pay for the packaging. The most important data really for tonight's discussion is that thirty-three percent of our food came from the USDA federal government. And this is the part where we are feeling the most crunch. And we spoke to you last year about this and that we are anticipating a cliff of, as we call it, a federal commodities cliff. And that is definitely happening. We are now in a position of elevated need that has not decreased since the pandemic. Our stable source of food rescue donated food that really can't grow, right? We are already at every grocery store in every part of Washtenaw County that has food for us. So we can't really grow that percentage of food. And so we have been relying on purchasing food to fill the gap, and a gap that is increasing now. So for fiscal year twenty-four, which starts July one, we are anticipating, based on our discussions and what we're seeing happening nationwide, essentially, we're planning for a recession or a continuation of these economic conditions that are challenging people who can't afford rent, who can't afford food, and that we are planning to purchase more food to make up for the decreased federal resources. All of that would be reasonable if we were not experiencing tremendous food inflation.
Just a one-minute heads up. You got one minute.
A one-minute, okay, then I'm going to go to the next slide. So that shows you pretty dramatically our increase in purchase food costs in a really short timeframe. I will point out that in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, that was the height of the pandemic. We distributed nine million pounds of food and we paid a little over two million for food costs. This year, we're looking at about seven million and we exceed, we will exceed three million in this fiscal year for food costs. And we are anticipating next year, in order to meet the increased demand for services, that we will have to spend more than four million dollars. That is half of our operating budget and for our entire organization. And we have a two-million-dollar budget deficit. And I'll leave it at that. Well, obviously, we're here. Well, I don't know if we have time for questions here or, okay, so I'll leave it on that sad note, but and hopefully I can answer questions together with Markell.
Okay, first I'll go to Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm curious about the DoorDash grant. Like, what does, does that cover the cost of the delivery?
Yes.
People can order, but they don't have to pay the fee for the delivery?
Yes, it's not food. It's what, so we work with existing pantries that have been designated to be sort of a, you know, convener of this. And they get food, this food that they would normally have available. And they, if they can't get someone to a pantry, DoorDash will do it. There are some limitations to it, and there's a certain volume. But yes, it's working right now. It may not last forever. This is a private donation, honestly, that, you know, is coming from the DoorDash Foundation. And we hope it continues, but we anticipate actually next year that the Food Bank Council of Michigan will be picking up some of the price tag on behalf of the network, but it's a very valuable resource.
Last question. You said two-million-dollar deficit.
Yeah.
That's like right now, or that?
That is projected starting July one. It's our budget in the, it starts July one. And it's literally just food costs, and that's what we're and because these food costs have not gone down, and you know it, you see it at the grocery store. So even though we're getting great deals, in order to deal with the vast decline of federal resources, that's the, that's our only alternative, right, to keep the pantry stocked at the level that they will need to be stocked to provide adequate support for people.
Any Commissioner follow-up or questions on this side? Commissioner Rappi.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for your presentation. Just want to start by thanking you for the work that you do as an organization and for our community, I mean, for the decades that you've been in operation, serving our community and helping our residents. What you've just outlined is really concerning. And, you know, obviously, having served during the recession, we saw, you know, a lot of people across our community experience, you know, hunger. But I think what we're seeing now is a recession still, but it's a recession that delineates between those that already had wealth and those that don't, and those that, you know, are falling beneath a poverty line that is, the bar is going up and up, and more people are falling under it because of inflation. And wages aren't going up. People are working harder than they ever have, but they're making less money, and so they can't afford to feed their families. And that's what you're trying to deal with now. And so it's not, when we talk about a recession, we're talking about, oh, the economy, the American economy is teetering. That may not be what's happening right this moment. What's happening right this moment is the economy is teetering for individual families that were already struggling, that are now struggling even more. And so I think we kind of have to, like, reframe the crisis in some ways because it's, it's, from what you're saying, more homeless families than we've ever had. The crisis is more real. It's more present. The problems are even worse than they maybe even weren't during the recession because it's different circumstances and the inflation is causing that, part of what is causing that, and the fact that wages aren't going up.
Yes, and I am no economist, but what I can say is that people are still in very much need of supports in terms of food and housing, and there's less support coming through the federal government, especially in the food space. So what's happening in the food space has affected directly individuals and programs like Food Gatherers Food Bank. So individuals are getting less support through SNAP benefits. It's averaged like ninety dollars less beginning in March. Food banks, again, through the USDA program, are now, we're looking at having something like maybe losing another five percent of what's left in the USDA coming next year. So we're really in this challenging circumstance. And I've been doing this a long time, for a long time. And I've never, it's just so topsy-turvy. And a lot of these programs, like, we will follow up, and I'm sorry, our timing didn't work so well, Annie, with getting everything out of practice, being in person. But we do have a set of some policy, you know, longer-term policy things. But even if they all come through, and the farm bill is passed and Jeff Irwin's efforts pass in Lansing to remove the acid test, all of which are really positive, positive things, they will not affect this next reality for this coming year for us. That, and so we're really hoping that we can follow up in conversation with you. And we're hoping that maybe there's some unallocated ARPA money. I mean, this is definitely government-related pandemic responses, right? That this is a direct result of the pandemic. And we're, we can guarantee you, we can spend it before you even give it to us, just in terms of purchasing food, and easily have the paperwork that you need and the time you need it. And again, we'll follow up more with that.
If I could make a quick follow-up, which is two quick things. The first is just slightly different from what was said earlier, that when the federal money expired, it wasn't the state's decision, it was the federal government. That's partially true, but the state could have decided to fill that gap and continue funding food supports in the state of Michigan. And I hope that they can still consider that moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
The other quick thing I do want to say, though, too, is what, the work that you are doing, just emphasizing something you just said, the work that you are doing is a function of county government. I mean, making sure people are fed is a baseline function of who, of what we should be doing as a board. You're providing that service as a nonprofit. If you weren't here, the board would have to find another way to provide, you know, food relief in our county. You're providing that service for us. And so the way I see it is, you being successful is a function of what we do. And making sure that you're supported should be a responsibility of ours, because the work that you're doing is a responsibility of ours.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Labarre, then Commissioner Machewski, and then Commissioner Scott. And then Commissioner Sanders, is your hand up, or is it, okay? Okay, I'll come to you after I, I'll come to you after everybody else goes first. So Commissioner Labarre, Commissioner Machewski, then Commissioner Scott. Try to keep them tight. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, with that admonition around time, just quickly, so that we're clear, do you have concerns about the viability of some of your community partners to be able to stay afloat as organizations if they have to bear some of these food costs directly or without assistance from outside organizations like Food Gatherers?
Yeah, so our model has been to provide all the operating support that, I mean, we don't charge our agencies for the food or for the delivery. There's a couple of exceptions to that, like the pantry we support on campus at University of Michigan. But for the most part, our service is whether we're delivering to Manchester or whatever, we do at no cost to them. But the purchase food piece of it, right, like, that is where we have used what we've called carrot credits, and I don't really want to confuse you, but that's just a credit we give to agencies. That's money raised to support their purchasing of our food, if you will.
So if it's not coming from you, it's not coming, essentially.
Correct. And the challenge for us is to change this model overnight is really hard to do because we've been doing it for decades. And most of our partners think, you know, it's all free, it's all free to them, but it's not free to us, right? So we are, you know, in conversation with them because it's such a pinch right now for us to continue to do the level of services. But that's exactly what we want to avoid, is because it will lead to inequitable outcomes. It will be agencies that can afford to do this, and sometimes are they're supported by, you know, wealthier institutions like universities that they can keep going, but smaller programs in certain neighborhoods won't be able to do that privately on their own.
Okay, I'd echo somewhat what Commissioner Robbie said. Thank you for your time, and Chair, hopefully that was quick enough. Thanks.
Good job. Yes, it was. Commissioner Machewski.
Thank you. Eileen, I think you've described the situation. A lot of human service agencies have been dreading for the past two or three years, knowing that the funding cliff is coming from money that we had to meet the need during the pandemic. The need is still there for a variety of reasons that have been covered already this evening. But I didn't want to let you go without having you tell everybody about how to make a donation, what you're looking for in terms of donations, because I know there's criteria in terms of what you can donate. And sharing that information with us is we can share it with people in the community as well.
You mean as county commissioners or as private citizens? So.
Go with the private citizens.
Okay, I was like, okay. You know, our website, foodgatherers.org, is very user-friendly and accessible. And it can point you to how to donate financial support and how to support us with food donations as well, if that answers. Foodgatherers.org, but yeah, we're pretty easy that way.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for coming. I want to just tell you, again, I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. The work is hard that you do, and I imagine it is, you know, there's physical work of what you're doing, but the heartbreaking work of what you're seeing. I can't imagine that. I mean, I also work a heartbreaking job, and I know how it can weigh on you, but it can make you feel really good that you're trying to do things to make the community better. So thank you very much for that. And I just want to, again, amplify what Commissioner Robbie has said and what Commissioner Labarre said. The service is important, and I just want to also highlight how I can see how the history of your organization, the work that you've been doing in the community for years, has made you more effective at what you're doing and how you really kind of were nimble in the pandemic and thought about things. And I look forward personally to working with you, hopefully for years to come. So thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And it really is a network of human service partners that we have established that we know how to do this now, and it took us a while. But now we're like, we're losing the thing we could count on, which is food, honestly, a steady supply of food. And that's just, it's really challenging. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the work. I just want to ask one more quick question. So we hear about the deficit that you guys are running. Do you have a sense of how much money would be needed to stabilize the system? I know it's going to be more than what your deficit is. Because, I mean, we would look to be able to partner with, you know, the Community Foundation and other partners to be able to try to make that a reality. The dressing food insecurity is really important to everybody at the table here. But it's not going to be something that we're going to be able to solve on our own between us as the county and you all, but want to figure out how we can be helpful with that and to have a better understanding of what is needed for the whole of the system.
It's a good question. I mean, it's so, this, the things that we are experiencing are so unusual, right? Like, this, the changes in donated product as a result of consumer behavior. So I don't know, like, if, what the three years is going to look like right now. But I could say that given the current trends and the lack of USDA food primarily coming through nationwide, that's what we're, we are expecting that to be a reality for the next two years. And Markell will talk more about the farm bill, but, and ways that we can address that. So, I mean, our, and we, I will say, we get, we're really grateful for the support that we get from the county, but we have an eight-million-dollar budget. It's about five percent of our budget. So. it's and that that's not a good or bad number. I'm just saying the rest of it is coming from exactly the places you were describing, like we really do tap in to private do private funders, community foundations. Every, you know, we're like, we're doing it. So that's that's the thing why we're coming back really to you and to say like, we are, we get a lot of private support. A lot of charitable. We have, you know, seven thousand volunteers. We we are tapping into that system. It's just this is unprecedented to have to deal with these kinds of combination of loss of SNAP benefits at this time and the loss of federal food that was never free to us, but just didn't cost us four million dollars a year.
Well, I appreciate that. Sounds like I the sense I get is we're going to have to do more with our state and federal partners to be able to really solve the problem.
Yes, yes, for sure. And the farm bill is a good way towards that. And there is some other stuff happening in Lansing, but we'll follow up in emails. So I'm sorry to take up your time, Chair.
I really appreciate it. I
Thank you for your work with Senator.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I echo everything that's already been said by my colleagues. So thank you so much. We'll be hopefully, we will all be working with you. So
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up, we have Destination Ann Arbor, and we have Sarah Miller, the president and CEO. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. I do have a couple of colleagues here tonight, and I'd like to introduce them. Chad Wiebesick is our VP of Marketing and Communications. And Mike Price is our newly appointed Chief Sales and Operations Officer. So these folks are here to help in case there's some questions I can't answer, and they're in the trenches. So thank you again all for having us today. It's most of you have known me. I've been with the CBB and Destination Ann Arbor for over twenty years, but I'm newly appointed to this role. And it gives me a unique perspective, I think, coming into something like this where I've been immersed in the community as long as I have. But being able to also take a fresh approach. And that's what we've really spent the last six months or so doing. Reevaluating our mission, if we can get that slide up there. Reevaluating our mission and our impact on our visitors and our our local community as well. So I thought I would start with that slide, maybe. While I'm starting to wait for that slide, I will ask how many of you are familiar with Destination Ann Arbor, who we are? Everyone, okay, I didn't want to get into too much detail, but I am happy to talk about us for a very long time. So if you want to, I encourage to time to meet with any of you and have a nice, long, lengthy discussion about that. And we are still not on the right foot. We'll get there. And I know, wait, you know what? I'm gonna do my twelve minute timer. Other way. There we go. All right, I'm on the clock. Appreciate that. Thank you. So our mission to be the leading force in promoting the Ann Arbor region as a vibrant destination that inspires people to think and dream bigger. And I love how that invokes emotion, because I feel like that's representative of our entire county. Everyone in our our communities are proud to be here, and I we are, we have a great honor of of kind of being the loud speaker to the rest of the world about how great this place is to come and visit. So we have that honor, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but that's how we accomplish this mission. Next slide, please. What does that mean for our county? And this is 2021. I'll point out was the last time we did the study. Obviously, that was coming out of COVID. We were slow to do that in this region. So these numbers will are probably very understated, but six point one million total visitors representing six hundred and thirty-four million and new visitor spending to our area businesses, which generates thirty-three point one million in state and local tax revenues from those visits. And that's six, over six thousand eight hundred jobs supporting all of that visitor spending. So the impact is is big in this county. Next slide, please. I know we, most of you have talked about this. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but the Pure Michigan campaign is part of our co-op. We did do a new TV commercial this year. This is the first time in ten years. It's pretty exciting for us. And it's got a DEI twist to it. So having a fresh take is is the new overarching theme at Travel Pure Michigan, and it's represented in this commercial. Do you have thirty seconds? Do you want to see it? All right, let's see if we can play it. No promises. Maybe. We'll send it to you. Because it doesn't look like it wants to participate with us today. That is a oh, are we going to try to play it through YouTube? That probably would be too difficult. Let's just go back. So it's a match-for-match partnership, actually, it with Pure Michigan. So our three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar investment is matched for an impact of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that commercial will be seen two point seven million times through connected TV, forty million impressions as well. And it really, I think, does a great job. It's a pretty cool commercial. And if you have, I'm sure you've all seen it. It's been around for a while, but the Fresh Takers is pretty neat. So we will, we'll follow up with an email on that. So you can all see it. Next. Marketing performance, something that we've been able to do this year is really amp up some of our research tools, which I think is really important when you're talking about who's visiting the county and what the impact is. So some of those items are seen here on the slide. So far to date, visitors to Washtenaw County, four hundred and seven thousand. We now have technology that is scary and tracks your cell phone data anonymously, of course, and within all guidelines that are legal. But it is true, and it does follow you around. So it's been very eye-opening to see some of the some things we knew, some things we didn't know. So we're learning a lot about that, and that's helping drive some of our marketing decisions. And we, of those visitors, forty-five percent of them stay at least one night in the county, which is pretty interesting. We were learning a lot around that as well. We have over a hundred thousand social media followers that we you utilize through engagement there. Excuse me, daily through both our AnnArbor.org and Ipsy Real channels, promoting all of our county events throughout the county and have a ton of engagement there as well. And we have over a hundred thousand monthly website sessions. That's to date. Go ahead. Next slide, please. I'm gonna eight minutes. Okay. Sales. That is a big part of what we do. Generating room nights for the county grouping, booking group business. Most of you know the unions. The the plumbers and pipe fitters, the electricians and the ironworkers, among others, have called Washtenaw County home. And that is no small feat. It's a partnership throughout the entire county that takes place to to house those groups. But in addition to that, we had ninety events booked year over year. That's up twenty percent. That's over fifty-four thousand contracted rooms for our area hotels that our staff participates or generates. Excuse me. That is a twenty-one point eight million dollar economic impact, and we are responsible for over twenty-seven thousand attendees for those booked meetings. That is also up ten percent on the year. Next slide. Sports Commission, you've heard of it for a while now. So we are have some impact here that we can report. This year alone, the national championships for Concordia, the NAI Cheer and Dance generated five hundred thousand dollars in economic impact. It was held at Concordia. Yeah, or excuse me, it was held at Eastern. And then we also, if you've seen it, there's been ads all over for the USFL working with that group. They're practicing and using a lot of facilities and hotels in the county. And that's another four point four million dollar impact as well. But the exciting news, I think, on our end, in addition to this. Next slide, please, is the facility development potential. Looking in at this and maybe having some real impact with the groups that we can bring here, a potential sports complex and working through feasibility on where we could potentially house that in the county as well as Ford Lake, looking at a potential growing course. And again, this doesn't happen. We're not doing this, but this is a partnership that we have with the county, with the the townships. Eastern, lots of different folks that come to the table to make these things a reality. And while they're not there yet, we're working towards some of these goals to see what the feasibility of them could be. So these are the types of things we're working on this year. And then this is not going to be something that happens overnight, obviously. So it'll take several years for us to to come up with something like this, but it's exciting prospects. It makes it very exciting to do the work we do. Continue. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion has been a big part of our year this year. We've partnered with the Ann Arbor A2Y Chamber with their education series along with United Way to help that education series. And if you haven't attended one of those events, I'd highly encourage it. They have done a great job of finding a great very impactful speakers over a variety of topics. And I think that that's been very engaging and well received. I've learned a lot from attending those. So I'd highly recommend you as well if you haven't already. And so for our part in that, can you please? We've kind of played off of that and created our own walking the walk program and highlighted DEI businesses in the hospitality space that are doing what they should in this in this world. So there's a few, and I encourage you to check out our website that talks a lot more about each one of those businesses, among others. This is just a small tidbit of that. And they do an Instagram takeover. We work with them on different promotional items to really get the word out on the good work that they're doing as well. And then, again, as we we know the importance of diversity, equity, inclusion, and I would say accessibility as well. So next year, we'll be continuing that plan. I'll go back. We'll be continuing that work through a a strategic plan to how we can improve in that space even more. What we can do potentially to create real impact in the county. So we're excited to take that on as well. And then lastly, what we've been up to is strategic planning. So we are in the midst of this, actually. For the first time, we've always gone out throughout the county to get impact, but this year we focused specifically three focus group sessions dedicated to the east, south, and west sides of the county. I had mentioned to you before, and I think it's important. It's been a listening session. Going around, hearing from people, knowing how we can make the biggest impact we can. And it it's really about what people want in our community. We want to portray each surrounding destination the way they want to be represented. So listening to them is important. And we've gotten a lot of really great feedback from doing that. And I think that engagement is going to help us improve overall. So in addition to that, we've done twenty, over twenty-one-on-one interviews with community leaders, such as some of you around the table here. The Community Foundation and several other community-led organizations to get their feedback as well on the whole Destination Ann Arbor, but also the tourism industry here in Washtenaw County. Survey requests have gone out to the entire hospitality community. And we will continue with half-day planning sessions with our Board of Directors, representing also the hospitality community to continue that that strategy to hopefully have a final plan executed about September of this year. In addition to that, many of you may remember that we had a tour, a comprehensive tourism plan that was all scheduled with salads on the tables on March thirteenth nineteen or twenty twenty. And that unfortunately came crashing down. So that was a very unfortunate day for many, many reasons. And so looking at revisiting that plan, that was a great plan. It had a lot of input from a lot of community members, and we're looking at revising that, bringing that back for next year. How much time? Two minutes? Okay, I think that might be my last slide. I do have an appendix in this slide. I didn't want to take a ton of time to talk about our history, to talk about our board, to talk about the transparency that we find very important in all ways. But I'll take my last one minute and encourage all of you. We have a lot of data, and I am a total data nerd. So if you would like to have a conversation about any of that, I am happy to sit down with you and go into detail, show you all the cool new research tools we have. It's pretty, pretty awesome, but I kind of geek out on that. So but any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioner Machewski hit his hand first and then Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah, congratulations on the new position.
Thank you.
I think when we, when we met, it was before you were named the the president and CEO. But we had a really good conversation, and I was wondering if you could highlight some of the things that you've been working on on the west side of the county. I think it's important for people to note that you do work out there, even though it's Destination Ann Arbor. But would be curious to know what you've been working on since we met several months ago at this point.
It's true. And thank you. Yes. And I appreciate the connectivity that you helped us with in that regard. In addition to all of the marketing and and support that you've seen, we've actually started working a lot more closely with the the chamber there and connecting with the rest of the the community. And I don't know if you heard of it, it was it kind of died during COVID to the big four hundred. If you recall that initiative, so that's sparking back up. So we're working with, and if you heard, I'm sure you did, that Chelsea was a just recently named a Pure Michigan Trail Town. And they're kind of the gateway to that big four hundred area. So working with them, listening to them about wanting to make that something that we highlight more in our county, and absolutely, they're right. So we're going to work with marketing team and as we, you know, go through our processes, that's definitely forefront, and it'll be something that we purposely, and we always highlighted it, but maybe with more intention, getting more feedback from the group and and how they want to present. The other thing that we learned from these focus groups as well and have been working on, how big of a wedding destination Chelsea is. And it is really huge, actually. And we knew that, but I don't think we knew how much of that. So really kind of talking through what that can look like. Ann Arbor is or the whole county really has some really unique venues for weddings. So being able to look at that and let's talk about what we can do with that. That's the exciting part. And I get real excited about that part of our job is these types of ideas. You talk, I love it. Talk to people, get some really great ideas, and how can we make this happen? You know, what can we do? It's a great story to tell. So we'll be working more with that as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciated the focus on new content and not giving us the history lessons. I think we've all seen it before. So glad we were able to use the time really effectively in that way. To echo Commissioner Machewski's point, I think I've said it before, and I'll say it again, maybe we should change the name to Destination Washtenaw. And then we don't have to get in this whole thing about, you know, the western part, the eastern part. So maybe something to consider. The other part, I was really excited when you shared with me the information about the Ford Lake project. I'm looking forward to us being able to work together on that. And it's for me, a really interesting opportunity to work effectively with the township on the thing. Like, I think there's potential for that. I'm looking forward to us having a conversation with the supervisor about a potential area for collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, then Commissioner Light.
Mrs. Miller, I I think I'm a little biased, but considering the fact that I have my CTA.
I appreciate that.
Consider myself to be somewhat qualified.
You are.
I just wanted to share with those that are listening that I learned today, that one out of every ten jobs here in Washtenaw County is directly affected by our tourism. May not sound like a lot, but it is. It's a lot. And then there's the trickle down. So I learned a lot as I got one hundred percent. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
That you know, shares with us and lets us know that we are all ambassadors for our own county. And bringing in and making sure that the business and the tourism continues and that people are happy in their experience here. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, for at least having that program and offering that. And for seeing you twice today.
Thank you. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. And Commissioner Light.
Thank you for coming and for the great presentation. I'm excited about what Destination I'm excited about what Destination Ann Arbor, maybe Destination Washtenaw is going to do. Our governor has informed us that we need to grow Michigan. And I believe that Destination Ann Arbor can be a very big part of that. Because Washtenaw rocks and we're doing great things. And so I think that this could be, you know, a great opportunity for Washtenaw to grow Michigan greatly. So I look forward to, we all look forward to working with you and growing Michigan with Washtenaw being ahead of that.
Thank you for saying that. And I'll just add one quick thing because it's true. It's a pretty common saying in our industry, but it all starts with a visit. And it does, whether you're really relocating your business, your family. You don't typically go someplace without that visit. And we pride ourselves on making sure that that visit is the best it can be to make all of that happen.
Next, Commissioner Ravi, and then after that, Commissioner LaBar.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Wonderful job. You said you were sending out a survey to four hundred people in the service industry. What does that mean? Who are the four hundred people? Because it sounds like, I mean, there's thousands of people that work in the service industry. I just want to make sure that whatever survey you're doing regarding, you know, regarding the service industry, regarding what Destination Ann Arbor is doing. That you're including voices of people that are, you know, not just business owners, but people that are working in the service industry.
So the stakeholder ship list that we use is of all businesses in the county. But to your point, it would be our contact in within those businesses. So most of them would be probably your GMs, probably, you know, those types of positions.
Well, I mean, I would encourage you to reach out broader than that. I think there's a lot of folks that are, you know, working directly with tourists.
Absolutely right.
That may have sometimes a better perspective, honestly, like a more on the ground perspective of like, this is what folks are saying. This is the experience they're having. So I just want to make sure that when you're doing that outreach, you're having those conversations too.
Great point. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner LaBar.
Thanks, Chair. Sarah, good to see you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I just wanted to mention two things quickly. One, please lean on this board in terms of anything we can do proactively on those labor conventions. Those have been historically not just important, but things that have been put at risk with state policy around right to work and other things. And so I think for the time being, we are in a better spot on that. But if that changes, you know, please let us know. The other thing, I, I appreciate the work you are doing. Let me say, though, I certainly know some of the folks on your Board of Directors. And this will let you say that a, an elected official said it directly. I, I hope the CVB will continue its efforts, but will also lean in on some of the governor's points about Michigan being an inclusive state in the context of LGBTQ. I, I, I think we are in a somewhat bifurcated era here in, in, in this country. And I hope that you will, if you have a chance, make use of that. Because I think that is something that aligns not just with the values of this community. But also, you know, candidly with if folks are going to choose to travel, you know, in, in the United States. Travel where you are welcome, and, and I hope you'll take advantage of that. And now this way you can say Andy pestered me about it. So thank you.
Thank you. It is on our radar for sure. Absolutely. It's an important.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mentally, I was getting prepared to say something. I'm going to let you go first and then I'll close it up. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you very much, Chair. Hi, Sarah Miller. I was really glad to see you. And I'm really glad to be a part of all the discussions about this. You know how exciting I think it is, and you, probably everybody in the room can hear it. I think how we promote this area, it's an incredibly original like county. I feel like we have these vibrant, like two main hub cities. And then we have some smaller cities that are just really cool. And the accessibility to the rural nature, I've said all of these things to the organization that you're working with. I think that it makes it really unique to travel here. I'm also excited to think about the sports complex. Obviously, I have a little bit of a bias towards thinking about rowing. So that sounds great, too. And I also am excited to think about how we can work regionally, too. Because the Ford Lake, I think, will be more geared towards university rowing. And hopefully, we'll be able to work as a region with some high school rowing courses in our metro park system and make that part of the, the scene, too. Because I can't tell you, when I was at our Midwest Championships for rowing, the number of people I heard coming from all over the Midwest, coming to our metro parks in this area, just talked about how beautiful Michigan was. And they seemed surprised. So I am excited to surprise more people with our beauty and, and think that you're doing great work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. I just want to, I, I know that it's like new for Pure Michigan. But I just want to kind of give you all kudos for actually amplifying Ypsilanti businesses, specifically black owned businesses before some of our state leaders started integrating DEI in some of the broader initiatives. And also thank you for all the support to celebrate Ypsie's two hundred years, because we are the oldest city in Washtenaw County. Yeah, this year.
This year.
Yeah. So one thing that I wanted to mention, just in some of the data points that you made around folks who come here and spend money and how much money that draws in. In Washtenaw County, especially in Ann Arbor and even in Ypsilanti now, employees who work at the restaurants and serve your beer and your burgers or work at the counter at places like, you know, Unicorn Feeding Supply or other stores, downtown Ann Arbor, downtown Ypsie, even in Chelsea, across the county, cannot afford to live here. And I hope that, like, going forward, both when we talk about tourism and amplifying our businesses, we can also think about making sure that we're fostering communities where people can work and live and thrive. So I just wanted to throw that out there as like something that I'm thinking about when, you know, I, I think it's great. I want people to come here and visit and maybe even move here, because Michigan, we, as Commissioner Light referenced, we know that we need to see some growth, but we also need accessible housing. And it's a huge problem in Ann Arbor, which has now created a huge problem in Ypsilanti. And even in rural parts of the county, it's, it's really hard to find a table of housing. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I'm, I know this is something that you all think about.
We do.
But I just wanted to amplify it here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Commissioner Ravi.
I'm hesitating whether to say this because that was a good closing thought. So yes, may, maybe I will, maybe I will have an offline conversation. Go ahead.
Got two minutes before the next presentation. Yeah.
I'm letting it go.
Well, great. Awesome. Thank you. Well, I hope you can tell that we all really appreciate the work that you're all doing. I've seen a lot of it firsthand over the last several years, so I appreciate you all. And if, if nothing else, I hope to get that link so I can watch that video. I don't think I've seen it yet, actually.
I wish we could get it up, but that's.
Try, I mean, you can.
I mean, if someone can access YouTube, but I don't know.
We'll send it out.
Play it at our next meeting.
Yeah, we can send it out. And I, I do encourage any of you, if you have any more questions and would like any more details, feel free to reach out. You have my contact information anytime. Would love to have a conversation.
Awesome.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have Catherine with the first quarter budget report.
After all the excitement, I'm going to go finances now. Okay, so thank you for your time tonight for the first quarter budget update. Starting with the general fund, we are projecting overall. Sorry, budgeted at one hundred and forty-two point two million dollars for both revenues and expenditures. That being said, this is the first quarter update through March. So it does not include updated property tax amounts, state marijuana or liquor tax dollars, and the offsetting expenditures that will be before you later tonight as a budget adjustment. So they're not in the budget numbers, but they're in the actuals, so we always see large variances with this first quarter. We are projecting general fund revenues to be one hundred and forty-one point six million and expenditures to be one hundred and forty-three point two for a net shortfall of one point six million dollars. This does include budgeted uses of fund balance that we will talk about on a later slide. And our projected fund balance will be forty-eight point two million dollars, thirty-three percent of the budget. This is just a quick placeholder right now for when we do quarterly comparisons. I just didn't want to forget it for the future, so it's another way of the same data. For general fund revenues, like I said, it's one hundred and forty-one point six million dollars. We have made a couple of changes to this based on feedback from before. Contract policing is broken out from public safety and justice. And the general operating millage is broken out from other general government revenues. So we can really see that impact of property taxes have as we talk about those changes later tonight. So the expected, as expected, the largest revenue is the operating millage at ninety-one point four million dollars. And then we see public safety and justice at fifteen point five million, and the contract policing being fourteen point two million. And then that general government of thirteen point two million is primarily state liquor tax dollars, state, the marijuana dollars, and then state revenue share. For the shortfalls, when this was published, there's a tiny typo at the bottom. The chart hasn't changed and we fixed it, or we're in the process of fixing it online, just in case you're looking at something and it looks a little different. But so the total revenue shortfall is six hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. The biggest shortfall of revenues is that budgeted use of fund balance of four point three million dollars, which is based on the already authorized five point eight million dollars, offset by a use of reducing our planned contribution to fund balance, which is just designed to keeping our financial statements clean. So I'm just trying to keep it out there, but in general, we're still using five point eight million dollars of fund balance. It's just changed how it's accounted for. District Court continues to see reduced revenues of the projected shortfall of just over a million dollars. This is in alignment with the previous year's trends regarding the changes in law for probation, ability to pay, as well as decreases in tickets and the caseload of the courts. There's a small expenditure surplus of nineteen thousand that slightly offsets this due to vacancy savings. The Sheriff's Office has a shortfall of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is fully offset by their projected one point nine million dollar expenditure surplus. The majority of this is due to PSU positions that are allocate, that have been created, but can't be filled and therefore are not charged. But we budget it because we're budgeting expenditures as well. And then a shortfall in overtime reimbursement and then all the other revenues. Then the trial court, as we've talked about many times, also is projected to have reduced revenues. It's more than in previous years, we're up to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is due to caseload still being below pre-pandemic levels, as well as the participation in the cities and counties for fines and fees, justice reviewing, and recommending that we reduce or eliminate discretionary costs and are only charging mandated fees. So the budget is in alignment with that. This shortfall is fully offset by a one point one million dollar expenditure surplus. One thing I do want to point out, because it's not on the graph, is traditionally, we see a large surplus in civic infrastructure revenues. We've seen large, usually over a million dollars from the clerk's office. We are hoping this year that we hit budget. So that revenue that we've used to have is, sorry, is drying up. So I'm used to seeing a large bar there and it's noticeably missing, or is that seventy-three thousand dollars? So just something we're keeping an eye on. And then general government's projecting that surplus of one point six million dollars based on state announcements for the marijuana tax dollars and the liquor tax dollars. The liquor tax dollars by policy, forty percent is automatically directed towards contributions for substance abuse funding. So that's reflected on the expenditures. And then property tax, property taxes have been updated for that equalization report and show increased revenues of four point six million dollars. Given that this represents an increase of six point seven seven percent in property tax revenues, it also triggers increases within our labor agreements, which largely offset that revenue that we give, that we have earned, plus the policy of implementing MAGA and reserving the first half of a percent of any property tax collections above assumptions for personnel cost growth. Later tonight at the board meeting, there will be the budget adjustment that adjusts for all of these factors. So for planned use of fund balance, currently in the middle, we highlighted the five point eight million dollars that has already been allocated, the largest of which is the two point eight million for human services transition programs. And then unspent twenty twenty-one compensation dollars and the remaining health non-structural general fund appropriation. The top bar is the four point two million. That's part of tonight's budget adjustment of recommending unspent twenty twenty-two compensation dollars for up to that four point two million to be spent in lump sum payments in alignment with our labor agreements with MAGA implementation. And then the bottom part is again offsetting the reduced contribution of fund balance. So we don't plan to save and plan to spend fund balance at the same time. Our expenditures, our expenditures are projected at one hundred and forty-three point two million dollars. Again, public safety and contract leasing are broken out. So we see public safety and justice is still the largest at seventy-eight point seven million. Support services, it's in the same slide, around twenty-one point three. Our health and human services appropriation are eighteen point one million, and contract leasing is seventeen point three million dollars in comparison to the fourteen-ish million of revenue. And then we also have projected lower down five point three million dollars, which is the twenty of lump sum payments, which is the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two unspent compensation dollars that have been in reserve. So this is another new slide. I've heard you all about how we'd like to talk more about non-general fund dollars. Because we are decentralized, we have multiple fiscal years happening at the same time. It's hard to do that in the middle of the year. But I wanted to give more information about how we're leveraging general fund dollars for that non-general fund programs. So hopefully this at least bridges some of that gap. But unfortunately, to really dive in, we can only do that at budget time. And then when we had our audited actuals. So here, right now, all appropriations just match what has been budgeted in the original reaffirmation from twenty-three through twenty-six. They have not yet been adjusted for those labor increases I've talked about. We're still processing and calculating them, but they will be adjusted once we have those numbers. So for shortfalls and expenditures, we're projecting nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars in expenditure shortfalls. The largest portion of this is in central personal services. And that is due to the planned expenditures of the unspent compensation study dollars, as well as the wage increases triggered by the property tax growth. Again, that we're bringing the budget adjustment for tonight. So then that will be less of a variance, because we'll have the budget authority to spend those dollars. Support Services is projecting a shortfall of four hundred and fifty-five thousand due to outside contract needs and administration, as well as increased contractor costs and IT, which is offset by surpluses in the other support services departments. The Sheriff's Office is projecting one point nine million dollar surplus due to four point four million dollars in vacant positions, which is offset by an over expenditure of two and a half million, driven primarily by medical and food contracts for the jail. And this does fully offset their revenue shortfall. And then the trial court's projecting the one point one million dollar expenditure surplus, of which one million dollars is vacant, big vacant positions. And again, offsets the revenue shortfall. And then lastly, general fund vacancy savings are currently projected to be three hundred thousand, which is the savings for all positions outside of the courts and sheriff. For non-general funds, most of our non-general fund programming is projecting to be either surplus or on budget. Due to time, I'm going to focus on the shortfalls, but if we have questions on the others, happy to answer. Community Corrections is a new one added to the list. They are projected to use at least two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of their fund balance due to increased supplies and contract costs, which is offset somewhat by vacancy savings. They do have a fund balance of five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, but it is quickly being expended. And will either be fully spent this year or middle of next year. Indigent defenses projecting a net shortfall, this is again just an accounting technicality because of the state pre-funding. The state portion of the revenue to cover current year expenses. And then health was originally projected to use four hundred and six thousand dollars in. And then health was originally projected to use four hundred and six thousand dollars in fund balance, sorry, four hundred and seven thousand. And they're now forecasting to use five hundred and thirty thousand. The major reasons are. External internal forces around hiring, including nurses and social workers. The realization of public health workforce funding that has been appropriated federally, but has been stuck in state legislation. And then anticipated pullback of Medicaid full cost reimbursement as the. Growth of eligible services that occurred in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one has been reduced. Overall health will be bringing their final budget adjustment in August or September in a long in alignment with their fiscal year twenty four budget. And the last one, we just do technical or technical budget adjustments between twenty five and a hundred thousand dollars that are within administrative authority. There's only one. This was just to recognize that we used to appropriate a portion of the MSU extension contract into the economic development and agriculture fund. But it's really operated by MSU extension and it makes more sense to align them. So we. Accounted for that. So it's sixty seven or sixty six thousand dollars. Next steps, we're continuing to monitor the clerk revenues. Like I mentioned, we're seeing surpluses and they've dried up. Structural versus one time marijuana revenue. You would think at this point we would feel like there's some kind of stable ability to project. And it's not there yet, but we keep trying. We keep hoping for state information on how to. Really feel confident about what we can look at getting year over year. Court revenues, we're still looking for that new norm. Still figuring out what things look like after after COVID, but also the fines and fees and justice and all of those things that are playing into. Both district court and trial court revenues. We are getting close to the policy limit of fund balance. So we're just going to keep monitoring that. And then expenditures, again, looking at impact of inflation, fuel prices, supply chain issues, anything that's come out of COVID. And then the impact of personnel cost growth and the implementation of the compensation study. As Tina likes to remind us all, we are. Six months into this, and so it's still hard to really know what the long term costs are. It will feel more comfortable as we have. As we go on and have had a few years in there. And that next steps, so we'll be back August or September with the second quarter, third quarter, November. And then hearing report next March or April. For the budget process, we are proceeding along nicely. The departmental request process is underway. They are due to. The budget task force by June sixteenth, so a week from this coming Friday. And then we like to bring the recommended budget to you all in September, October with adoption in November, December. And with that, any questions?
All right, Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the presentation as always. Thank you for making adjustments. Let's see, I'm trying to pull the slides up because I was watching yours, but I don't have them in front of me. But it was the slide on the projected. Surpluses and shortfalls in each. Area, I think it was like the fourth slide.
For expenditures or revenues?
Expenditures. Or no revenues, it was the first, it was the first one.
Yep, one second. This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So help me understand how this interplays with the one on. So this is the revenue, revenue shortfall. How does this interplay with the one on expenditures? Because basically what I'm. Obviously, this is, this is still Q one, right? And so there's some changes that are going to happen, but. Seeing that the, that. You know, three areas. Where we essentially have a. Lump sum budget agreement are the three that are sort of like underperforming. I just want us to be cautious about that because the sheriff, you know, has an MOU. He gets to keep his. Revenue at the end. That's been a longstanding policy. And so. Same with the courts, like we give them a lump sum budget allocation. And so my concern is that if. If these are trends that we're going to see throughout the year. Frankly, I don't. If we've allowed them to keep their surpluses in the past. And and we are put in a position where we are being asked to. Help bail them out if they're not getting the revenue that they need. I have some concern about that. So what, you don't necessarily need to react fully to that, but it's, it is a general statement of concern with. Lump sum budget agreements and the MOU that we have with the sheriff's office. And if. Those departments are, or those offices are underperforming. In terms of revenue, then. You know, that that becomes problematic as we look at that. It's different for units that are not lump sum budget or MOU units. But for those that have enjoyed that relationship for many years. I feel somewhat differently.
Yes, understood. That is why we do highlight the trial court and the sheriff's office do have expenditure surpluses that do offsets that. So there's not a net negative impact on the general fund. But yes, understood and heard. And these are. Definitely numbers we have seen over the years and especially if the courts continue to get worse year over year.
Yep. So I just want us to continue to monitor that. That's something I'm very concerned about. Could I also ask about the. The MAGA implementation dollars? You had a slide on that. I think it was the next one. Yeah, there you go. Yeah. So you said we're, we're voting on that top bar tonight?
So it's included in the budget adjustment to be able to spend up to that four point two million dollars of unspent twenty twenty two compensation study dollars. So they were allocated, but just due to the timing of implementation of MAGA, they weren't spent in fiscal year twenty twenty two. So it's a similar recommendation to what we did with twenty twenty one. When we had unspent reserves that we were able to distribute them out.
So this is like carry forward one time money. This isn't structural four million dollars. This is one time money from last year. That we want to allocate to this.
Yes, in the, in the agreements, we recognize that we often would have nonstructural. Money available. So they're built into the agreements like. To be determined lump sum that can be negotiated based on administrator's recommendation with the labor unions, labor partners. So we've built that into the agreement and this would be the. Funding pot to be able to execute that portion of the agreement.
So I guess what I'm just trying to understand is, is this. This is, is this MAGA or is this separate from MAGA as like a.
Yeah, this is MAGA.
Time budget.
This is.
Because MAGA is like changing people's salaries long term. This is what you're saying is this is one time money.
This is money we reserved to be able to implement MAGA in twenty twenty two because we implemented it at the end of the fiscal year. We did not. Have twelve months of expenditure. So we have a. Large surplus in that bucket that we reserved based just on the timing of the implementation.
Okay. So you're saying the money came from. Budget, something that was budgeted for MAGA that we didn't spend. But the proposal on the agenda tonight is to spend that money in one time.
One time payments in alignment with the same MAGA agreement. So it was reserved to implement the compensation study and we are proposing we spend it on implement. On doing one aspect of the compensation study for the nonstructural payments. Does that help?
I'm going to have more questions at the board meeting, but that's fine for now. Thank you.
Okay.
There's a policy that takes advantage of every funding source, whether it's structural or nonstructural. And this would be the compensation, I mean, the nonstructural component of compensation. As well as because that policy change occurred last June first or June second of twenty twenty two. The resulting compensation study agreements with the unions included to be determined lump sum payments based on the year end surplus. That is language in the contract agreements. So there's two components of that. So there's the policy change that gave the administrator to make that recommendation. And then we to implement MAGA last year or compensation study at the end of the year. We built those into the agreements. Does that help?
It does. So if, if a unit did not agree to MAGA, they will not get. Access to this money?
That is a true statement because yes, that is a true statement, but they have negotiated. Meaning, and I'm going to call it this way, the pu- the public safety unions did not. Negotiate compensation study or MAGA implementation, but they had their own agreement that we settled through twenty twenty five that has different components. But yeah, this is a totally separate pot of money for explicitly the compensation study implementation continuation of that.
So that covers the sheriff's units, but what about the supervisors, for example?
For, I don't know what their agreement is through the twenty twenty three.
I can, I know we're running out of time. I can reserve my remaining questions for the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Just so I could do a little bit more research, I just would like to find out. When the MOUs for. The sheriff and the, and the courts to keep whatever excess they have. When I'd like to know when that occurred, like obviously occurred before I became commissioner. So. Someone can help me. With that, so I can, you know, I'd like to see like who approved it.
I did not. Let me start there. If, if my memory. Holds and, and that's always a scary thing. I believe that the agreement with the courts was a. Two thousand and eleven or tw- yeah, two thousand and eleven timeline. And the agreement with the sheriff's office was in two thousand nine or ten? The most recent piece of that. So there's, there's, it's been going on for some time, but I. Think that's when that agreement happened. I'll have to go back.
Okay, I just wanted to be able to look and see what commissioners approved it. Thank you.
You're right. Maybe it was thirteen. So it was somewhere in the, in that frame, in that timeline.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Catherine? Okay. Thank you, Catherine. I'm going to follow up you. I have questions about some of your slides, but I'm going to save them for. One on one time.
Okay.
Awesome. Do we have any items for current or future discussion? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Support, all in favor? All right. All right. All right.
Welcome everybody. We're gonna get started here for the June seventh Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, into this world with liberty and endear.
All right, we will move into roll call.
Commissioner Beaman?
Present.
Commissioner Hodge?
Here.
Commissioner Labar?
Here.
Commissioner Light?
Present.
Commissioner Machewski?
Here.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders?
Present.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Summerblow?
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. All right, before we get into public participation, I know that there are many of you here to give public comment and we're all eager to hear what you have to say. We have a couple of items, ceremonial items that we're gonna start with. Uh, we'll do that first and then we'll move into public participation. So I'm gonna ask you to. So I have the honor of reading the resolution to honor the life and career of Pete Belios. I'm gonna start here and. Greg's over there. Greg will join me in a moment here. So I wanna start here. Uh, whereas Peter Belios served Washtenaw County for thirty-seven years and eleven months. From February fourteenth nineteen seventy-two, there was retirement on January first two thousand and ten. And whereas Peter Belios displayed unwavering dedication and commitment to his work, making significant contributions to the development and growth of Washtenaw County. And whereas Peter Belios held various positions within the county demonstrating his versatility and growth throughout his career. Serving as system analyst from February fourteenth nineteen seventy-two to February twenty-sixth nineteen seventy-three. Budget analyst from February twenty-seventh nineteen seventy-three to November twenty-first nineteen seventy-three. Assistant controller from November twenty-second nineteen seventy-three to January twentieth nineteen eighty-one. Budget manager from January twenty-first nineteen eighty-one to May second nineteen ninety-three. Interim finance group leader from May third nineteen ninety-three to December twenty-third nineteen ninety-five. And whereas Peter Belio served as the finance director of Washtenaw County from December twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-five. Until his retirement on December thirty-first two thousand and nine, overseeing the county's financial operations and playing a crucial role. And the development of annual budgets. And whereas Peter Belios' extensive knowledge and expertise in finance contributed. To the responsible management of the county's finances, ensuring the efficient use of resources and the delivery of essential services to the residents. And whereas Peter Belios' dedication extended beyond his role in Washtenaw County. As he actively participated in regional and national forums on workforce development and economic growth, contributing to the advancement of the field. And whereas Peter Belios' leadership and strategic vision were instrumental in fostering collaborations between different organizations, including municipalities. Educational institutions and chambers of commerce. To promote economic development and workforce initiatives. And whereas Peter Belios' exemplary work ethic, professionalism and integrity. Served as an inspiration to his colleagues and earned him the respect and admiration of all of those who had the privilege of working with him. And whereas Peter Belios' retirement on January first two thousand and ten marked the end of an era of dedication. In dedication service to Washtenaw County, leaving behind a legacy of excellence and commitment to public service. Now therefore be resolved that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners hereby honors the life and career of Peter Belios, expressing deep appreciation. For his thirty-seven years and eleven months of exceptional service to Washtenaw County. So Peter's family is here. I think Administrator Dill might wanna say a few words.
Deanne, George, I, I just wanna say on behalf of all of us in Washtenaw County, we thank you for sharing Peter with us for a bit of time. Peter was my friend. He was one of my colleagues. He was my mentor. And from time to time, he treated me like his other son. And this was, his passing was very, very difficult for me. And so many others that have worked with him over the years. I know that Tina Gavilliers here. And I just can't tell you all how much Peter meant to all of us. Every time I enter this space, I look at that chair there with my jacket. That was Peter's chair. Peter made it so that we could come into this space and do the work with county government. And do it in a way that would serve all of the residents. He is the one who made me understand what the nobility of public service was. And he is the one that made sure that we all were protected and were doing the good work for the citizens of Washtenaw County. No story about Peter is complete. You can't talk about Peter without story, so I have two. So shortly after I came to the county, one of my first responsibilities was a space plan. The county hadn't done a space plan in several decades. And I don't know if uh Jason T's in the room. We spent hours toiling over that space plan document. And I remember going to Peter and saying, Peter, I'm so nervous. This is my first presentation at the county. What do I do? Uh, you know, this is already a, a difficult space for all of us. I'm worried about the presentation. And Peter said, don't worry about it. I got your back. Besides, I'll slit everyone's throat in the room if they give you a hard time. He made me laugh, but he also gave me the courage to complete that presentation. And when I walked in the room that day, Peter was sitting in that seat and he looked at me and he said. At that point, I knew everything would be fine. Uh, that's the kind of person Peter was. When I became the administrator. My very first day on the job, I wanted to be proud. I was in the office early. It was seven-thirty. At seven forty-five. Someone came into my office. It was Peter Balian. And I know that I'm probably gonna get in trouble with some, but he gave me this holy water. He walked into my office. He started sprinkling it all over the room. I said, Peter, what are you doing? What, first of all, what are you doing here? He says, I want you to have the courage to make the right decisions for our organization and our community. And I don't want you to do it from a, a space of fear. Keep this in your office and don't worry about the decisions that you make. Just make good ones and everything will work out. Peter Balian is my hero. He is my colleague and mentor. And he meant so much to all of us in Washtenaw County. Thank you.
I believe Commissioners Labar and Robbie are gonna approach the podium now.
Colleagues, we unfortunately have another opportunity to recognize someone who had tremendous impact on this organization in this community. Barbara Levin Bergman was not just a former county commissioner. Uh, she was not just somebody. Uh, who served ten terms on this body. Uh, she was in her own way, uh, a, a true force. We are the beneficiaries in this room and in this organization, in this community, particularly in the context of human services. For many of the debates, the discussions and candidly. Uh, the fights that were fought and won for the betterment of the people of this community, uh, that Barbara led the way on. Um, we are fortunate to have her record here in this body and, and, and in this county. Um, Commissioner Robbie and I worked to put together, uh, with staff this resolution, uh, to honor Barbara Levin Bergman's service. Um, I would just say Yusuf will give a few moments, or a few, uh, comments as he was the only one of us lucky enough. To serve with Barbara, uh, and serve as her colleague. I had the good fortune, I was telling Daniel and Adrian that when I was first running for the Board of Commissioners, Barbara was kind enough to meet with me. Encourage me to run, um, and said something in that meeting that I will never forget. Which was, Andy, the number one job is human services. It's about the people that need the services the county provides and don't let anything get in the way of making sure that happens. Um, and she lived those words and she embodied them and I can still hear. Uh, her laugh, uh, when she would score a point, so to speak. And um, that look she would give us if, if, if we made a mistake in some other endeavor. Um, but Barbara was unique and I think it's no, a small thing to note. That in the history of Washtenaw County government, since, uh, our current state constitution, there's only one person. Who served longer on this body, uh, than Barbara. She served here ten terms. Uh, she did so much. And we are both saddened by her passing, uh, but honored by the record she gave us, the example she set. Uh, and candidly, the template she gave us for what it means to be a commissioner and an advocate for the community. Uh, I will defer to my colleague Commissioner Robbie to share a few thoughts and then we'd love to, to hear a word or two from the, from the family.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Labar. Appreciate that and to the family for being here today. Barbara Bergman. What a force of nature. And. One thing that Andy just said resonated with me, which is, he can still hear her laughter and I can still hear her laughter. Give me time to think about her. You can hear her laughter because she was somebody who was joyful. And who took this job. And herself, not too seriously. But she did the work of the people with intentionality and with seriousness in her heart every day. I believe that she sat in the chair actually where nobody's sitting right now. Uh, because when I first sat. Um, when I first came to the board, I was, believe I was sitting where, uh, Commissioner Machewski is sitting. And she was, she sat next to me. Um, I first met. First met Barbara when I was running for county commissioner the first time back in two thousand and ten and she had endorsed my opponent. After I won that election by one vote, I called her up. And I said, Barbara, I won the election and I look forward to working with you and I know that you endorsed my opponent. But despite that, and despite the fact that, you know, you campaigned against me, I don't care. I'm gonna put that aside and I wanna work together with you. And she went from somebody who endorsed my opponent, Mike Freed, who's now a friend of mine, by the way. To being my closest friend on this board and my mentor. Somebody. I have to say, in looking back now, fourteen, almost fourteen years of service to this community. I wouldn't be able to have done a single day of that without the mentorship and the guidance that she gave me. I wouldn't have been able to run. For Chair of the Board that following year. She's the one that advocated, her and Lee Gunn advocated for me to run for Chair and ultimately. Even though both of them were leaving the board, they helped to make the path for me and encouraged me to do it. Um, she's the reason that I served as Chair of the Board. She's the reason that I was encouraged to run for State Representative. For the six years that I served in that capacity. Her voice, her counsel, her wisdom have stayed with me year after year for all of these years. And. In my office in Lansing, in the state capital. I had with me near my desk, a little statue that Barbara gave me. When she retired from the board. Still have it at my house. Um, it is a, it's a statue of, uh, a little round table. And sitting around the table are a bunch of little animals. There's an elephant, there's a giraffe, there's a goat. And each of them is doing something a little bit different. One of them has a pen, one of them is, you know, they're, they're each doing something different all around the table. And she gave that to me as she was leaving the board and she told me. About the future that she had planned for me in politics. And she gave me that and she said, this is a symbol of the public process. We each come to this table with different backgrounds, different passions. But at the end of the day, we're all at one table. We all work together for the betterment of the people. And that's. What Barbara came to this board every day and did. She fought for the people of her district and the people of Washtenaw County. She fought for those that didn't have a voice. She fought for those who never had an advocate. She was here because of those individuals across our community. And there's one more thing that I wanna say about Barbara. And that is, she was a woman of many hats. And I mean that in a very literal sense. She wore hats to every board meeting and there has yet to be a commissioner that wears hats to every board meeting. I encourage it because it was so fun. I don't know where she got all these hats from, but she had, I can imagine just at home, an entire closet full of hats and they were fun hats. They were colorful hats. So she would come to the board meetings and she'd be wearing her fun colorful hats and she would liven the mood. We would get in these intense debates. We would get in to the issues. But she would still have a smile and she would still have a hat and she would still be fun-loving and she would still bring. That joy of living to the table, to this room, and no matter how heated things got. She always had that passion with her to make sure that we were under, we're making sure that we were fighting for the people of our districts. But that we were doing so knowing that there is joy in life. That there is, that there are rivers to be kayaked, that there are fun hats to be worn. And that's Barbara Bergman. And she will always live in this space and in our hearts, no matter where we go out in the world. Because she is a part of Washtenaw County, just like she is a part of each and every one of us. because she is a part of Washtenaw County, just like she is a part of each and every one of us. So thank you for being here today and we'd invite you to come up. We do have a tribute honoring her memory. I did not read the whole thing. But I think we've captured a lot of those sentiments in here and a lot of the work that she did, helping to start the WCHO, which was the precursor to the mental health, you know, community mental health that we have now, WCHO. Her work in human services, as Commissioner Labar said, her work across the county in so many different ways, we tried to capture and honor that here. But, you know, want to give you an opportunity to say a few words and thank you so much for taking the time to come here today.
My name is Daniel Bergman. I'm Barbara Bergman's middle son. And I just want to thank you all for this tremendous honor and acknowledgement of Barbara's work and service. I can tell you that this work, the years she spent on the county commission were clearly the highlight of her career. They were the apotheosis, the peak of what had been a lifelong dedication to community service, particularly mental health and juvenile services. And for her to have the opportunity to sit in this room amid her peers, do the work of the people for Washtenaw County meant the world to her. And yes, those hats, Bella Abzug had been her hero. And she wore those hats in Bella's honor and her own spirit of fun. So I thank you for acknowledging her and recognizing her work and hopefully continuing her legacy of good work in Washtenaw County. She loved this county. She loved this city. She loved the people she represented. And so thank you so much for this honor this evening.
Okay, we are going to move into public participation now. So before I get started with that, I also want to let everyone know that we received a large number of written public comments. And there is a cutoff before they make it into our packet. We do have the numbers on those. I believe last count it's thirty-five additional comments have come in after the cutoff for them to make it into our packet. We will still get those additional comments. They're just not published in the packet that we all have. So here at the Board of Commissioners, we need to get three minutes for public comment. You'll join us at the podium. You'll state your name and where you live. We have a nice color-coded system that counts down from green to yellow to red. Red, you're going to have to stop and I'll unfortunately have to cut you off if you keep going. If you're joining us via Zoom, you can hit the raise hand icon to let us know that you'd like to speak. I'll call on you. You'll state your name, where you live, and you'll have three minutes. If you're on Zoom and you're joining us by phone, you will hit star nine to raise your hand. I will call on you and you will hit star six to unmute yourself and you have the three minutes. Same rules apply. State your name, where you're calling from. And then I'll cut you off after three minutes. Would anybody like to give a public comment? Also, as a reminder, we are not able to respond to you immediately. We have to listen to all the public comment and then there's a section on our agenda for us to be able to respond.
Good evening Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me out tonight. My name is Mary Campbell and I am AFSMI's local twenty-seven thirty-three president. While I did not want to come across as looking a gifted horse in the mouth, I am here to talk to you tonight about the issues we are having with implementing the three million dollars in ARPA funds that the Board set aside as premium pay for county employees. When the employer started looking at the criteria to be eligible to receive this premium pay, I believe they wasted five months by making multiple false statements about the ARPA premium pay rules from the Treasury giving incorrect lists with multiple, a myriad of multiple errors of workers who would be eligible or not eligible by qualifying a seventy-one percent threshold for being in the office or the community that was never agreed upon with the union and refusing to truly negotiate implementation or eligible criteria, including sending emails to department heads communicating their proposal as a foregone conclusion. The employer never brought the union to the table to negotiate the eligibility criteria despite being asked multiple times over many months on what was going on with ARPA premium pay. And basically just receiving the same comment that we'll get back to you with all we heard. It was hard to stand by and understand who or why a decision was made to give almost one half of the three million that was set aside for premium pay to the sheriff's office for their two hundred and forty employees versus the other eight hundred and fifty plus employees throughout the county before any negotiations even happened. And I'm not talking against the sheriff patrol officers because I do know and I do understand what the sheriff deputies went through. But it was kind of hard to sit back and see that the sheriff's office staff was probably considered above what the rest of the general employees throughout the county were. And these are a lot of employees that that never stopped working from the time and being face-to-face with the public or working out in the field, in the community from the get-go, whenever the county first shut down, from the time the county opened back up again. And there was departments within the county, like the CMH Crisis Team and the Juvenile Detention Department that were seven twenty-four, that never stopped, just like the Sheriff's Department. And we were told by the employer that those departments were not in any way, shape or form comparable to what the Sheriff's Department did. So basically, what I'm kind of getting at and that I'm asking you Commissioners is that we somehow make this equitable for everybody and all of the employees within the county and not just some.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to give a public comment? Give you a warning. I don't know if the yellow light is working. It went straight from green to red. So we'll keep an eye out for that.
Hello, my name is Angelina Terrell and I am the interim Unit A Chapter Chair for AFSMI twenty-seven thirty-three. I'm advocating on behalf of Unit A for more money to be given to the premium pay. You gave us three million dollars to share amongst a thousand plus employees. And as of now, there's only one point six million left to disperse between at least eight hundred plus employees. We know that you guys gave money to the Sheriff's Department for their work throughout the pandemic. The pandemic was a time of deep uncertainty, uncertainty and the Washtenaw County community depended on its county workers for various backgrounds and departments, including and not limited to health workers, first responders, facilities, court workers and workers in IT. As my president mentioned before, the crisis team is a twenty-four seven operation that works alongside the Sheriff's Department who responds to the health-related phone calls. There is also, you know, health educators and sanitarians and water resources who did more than their job description describes during the pandemic to help implement COVID-related regulation and guidelines throughout the community. All these sacrifices deserve to be rewarded. I implore the BOC to dedicate more money to the premium pay so that way everyone can get the equal amount. Thank you.
You just state the city you live in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live in Ann Arbor.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Shannon Zier. I am the unit Chair for Chapter, or Unit B in twenty-seven thirty-three. I'm the Chapter Chair and the second largest bargaining unit within twenty-seven thirty-three. A lot of my members are on the lowest of the totem pole. And when it comes to ARPA funds, we were told for months, we waited on the employer, we waited on equity. We were told it had to be done. Equity Office was included. Where did the equity go? If we have nurses who nurses and sheriffs, by all means, we're on the front lines. We got one response back that said nurses because of their involvement in the clinics and the shots and the vaccinations, they deserve this pay. Darn right they did. That started a year into the pandemic. You have frontline workers who worked the whole first year when nobody knew anything. And now you want to tell the majority of our union that they have to share the same amount that another union got? Whether it was matched, we understand the sheriff matched, but you'd still have the money went to them. Money was distributed before with another union's MAG. I'm so disheartened with the negotiations that have continued with our unions from implementing MAG and not getting our people anything to not getting information to no parity in equity. You were essentially telling eight hundred of our workers, you worked from day one, you came in while other people stayed home. We're giving it to everybody and your risk didn't matter. Because if those eight hundred people stay home tomorrow, you guys can't work. Our citizens aren't served with the largest bargaining unit in this county. And then our other unions with us that are waiting for that money, if we all stay home, this county does not run. And now our people are mad. You said thirty-five about that you got since the close of the packet. I have thirty-two comments that were in the packet. That's a lot of union members saying, hey, we have a huge problem. You're going to give one person ten thousand or one person three that started right before the cutoff? That's a public health nurse that was out front, but tell my juvenile detention guys they get nothing because they pared down their department? So you jail adults, you get paid a lot, you jail children and keep them safe during the pandemic and come in, you get nothing? Because it's something, but it's still really nothing if you compare the two numbers. And the union is sitting on the back end of the peanuts that we laid out during MAG on the front steps because the largest unions are now left with whatever's left over after we made decisions. That pot of money should not have been touched until a framework was made for everybody and what the criteria would be to get that money. And you need to allocate more of the ARPA funds that came from the federal government. This county got seventy-two million dollars. And you're going to tell our eight hundred union folks they get a thousand dollars, maybe fifteen hundred after taxes, while others got ten grand that worked just as hard. Unfair.
Need you to state the city you live in.
I don't live in the county. I live in Clinton. I just work for the county.
Okay, thank you. If you state your name and the city in the beginning, I don't got to remind you.
My name's Lance Mitchell. I live in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and I work for Washtenaw County as a building inspector. Just wanted to shed some light on what the building inspection team experienced through COVID. Today, we entered residents' homes doing inspections equipment change outs to windows. We also did plan review and we took those home and we worked in the office as much as we could. We also responded to the flooding in Ypsilanti, mainly Ypsilanti area on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, also entering residences' home to do these inspections. So on behalf so I, yeah, I want to talk about the premium pay that just wanted to show or shed some light on what actually we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and city.
My name's James Glide. I live in Livonia, but I work for Washtenaw County Environmental Health. So I wanted to talk about the premium pay for the essential workers. On September seventh of twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners earmarked three point two seven million dollars for premium pay for in-person frontline workers. On November twenty-second, us in environmental health were made aware by our union that the public health nurses received bonuses of ten thousand, five thousand and three thousand dollars. And then we were made aware on May thirtieth that the Sheriff's Department had received the same bonuses for their roughly two hundred employees. That leaves about one point six million dollars in the pool for our eight hundred plus public health employees. That's less than two thousand dollars a person when we break it down. So and we worked side by side with the Sheriff's Department, with the nurses throughout the whole pandemic. We never stayed home. On top of the lack of funds to fairly compensate us public health employees to the same level as the sheriffs or the nurses, the money was only supposed to be given to those who worked in person during the pandemic. On May twenty-third, it was decided by county admin that everyone in the health department would receive bonuses, whether you worked in person or not. And that is because the county couldn't be bothered to keep track of who actually showed up to work or not in person. This goes directly against what the funds were set aside for and is severely demoralizing for all of us that did show up in person while others enjoyed the benefits of working from home. On November thirtieth, twenty-two, I reached out to Greg Dill, asking what the reasoning was that us in environmental health were seen as not deserving of the bonus that the public health nurses received. We worked the COVID clinic side by side with the nurses and the sheriffs. We continued our jobs of protecting public health, making site visits to our residents and providing the essential services required by us. The Board of Commissioners applauded us to the media, touted us how we were essential and vital frontline workers and the backbone of the pandemic response. Now, when it comes time to make good on Greg Dill's promise to us that we would be equitably compensated by Q one of twenty twenty-three, we are thrown aside because they've ran out of funding. My question to the Board of Commissioners is why are we thought of as less than? Because that is how we all feel. When the department heads wonder why morale is at an all-time low, look around and it should be obvious.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Name and your city.
Daniel Hoover, resident of the city of Myland, Monroe County. I work in Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County. Excuse me. So I am speaking as myself. I firstly, I support what my union siblings behind me and ahead of me will speak on regarding PDQs, the MAG study, as well as premium pay requirements. And I support President Nancy Hines' remarks regarding retro of PDQs back to March. And I also support President Mary Campbell's concern regarding the changes to premium pay requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Compton. I live in Ann Arbor. I work on the Washtenaw Crisis Team. We work twenty-four hours a day, just like police. You know, I support what everyone said here already. You don't need to hear that from me again. What I want to know is, because I've been to these meetings in the past, I know a lot of you have done public health work, you've worked with the community, we've got social workers here. What actionable steps are you guys willing and able to make based on what we're saying? I know I'm going to hear a lot of empathy from you guys and I appreciate that. That does mean a lot. But I want to know what actionable steps you guys are able to take and you're willing to take for our union. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Public comment before I turn to our friends online? Andrew, who do we got online? Oh, actually, who do we have? Yes, actually, who do we have online?
Yep, we have a few hands up. The first hand is from Rachel Rosten.
All right, Rachel, I still need you to state your name. So state your name and where you live.
Yes, thank you. My name is Rachel Rosten. I live in Belleville, Michigan. And I work on Washtenaw Crisis Team. And I just want to say that my team was so excited when we heard about the premium pay because we felt like it was going to be not just a huge boost to our morale, but finally some acknowledgement for all the work that we did during the pandemic. We worked nonstop. We never stopped because we were mandated. We were considered an essential service, so we were still in the community alongside the same officers that received ten thousand dollars for their work, which they deserve. So then when we find out that our pay is going to be greatly reduced because our administration is unable to do what they because our administration is unable to do what they need to do to make sure that we have fair compensation for the work we did was so disheartening, it completely broke our hearts. Okay? Cause we were out in the field risking our health, risking our safety, risking our family and friends' lives, safety as well. Because we didn't even know what COVID was all about, but we did the work because we were still dedicated to making sure the public had the services they need. And we were mandated to do this as an essential service. And it upsets me so much to know that the county has no problem mandating us to work our jobs, but doesn't feel that we should be fairly compensated for the work we do, that the work we do is on the same level as the people who I'm sure also work very hard, but we're working from home and not risking their health the way that we were. So what we are asking is that you find a way or help us find a way to make sure that we get fairly compensated for the work and risks that we took on. Just because our administration could not get everything together to make sure that we were paid fairly doesn't mean that we should be blamed for it and that we should take on the fall. So please help us find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, who's next?
Next is Barbara Fortune.
All right, Barbara, I need you to state your name and your city.
Hi, I'm Barbara Fortune. I, um, live in Canton, in, in Western Wayne County, mostly because I can't afford to live in Washington County. I'm a twenty-three-year, no, almost, I'm sorry, almost twenty-three-year employee of, um, Washington County. The last thirteen years with community mental health, youth and family, I agree with what Mary said. Chelsea, Rachel, Danny, and everyone who's already spoken. I also want to add two things. I know that our customer service staff um, were in during the entire pandemic, one of whom has, um, my, my, our hours, youth and family, one of whom has a immune, immune disorder. And I know that customer service staff were in when they didn't necessarily need to be because people weren't even coming in the building um, at that time. And also the community mental health ACT team serves our, probably our sickest and our most vulnerable consumers in the community. And I know that they were working right along with the crisis team. So I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that obviously our crisis team worked beside the police and, um, and as well as environmental services and the ACT team could not stop delivering medications just because there was a pandemic going on. We would have had a whole lot more hospitalizations and expensive services going on if they had stopped doing what they were doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Chair, next is Harvey Summers.
All right, Harvey.
Harvey Summers in Scioto Township. I want to start by thanking the commissioners for the work you're doing. And it's not always easy, but I also want to thank the workers of Washoe County for the last three years of the tremendous work that they've done that many of us haven't been paying attention to. I just think it's time to use this opportunity to say thanks. Mostly I'm here because I see in item seven on the agenda, you're going to be appointing people to the CJCC and I look forward to the CJCC getting underway and getting back to work. And I also look forward to the commissioners when the opportunity arises to help move forward with the Restorative Justice Center that's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. That's it. And last call for anybody in the room. Anybody in the room want to give public comment before I move us along to response? Okay, all right. Before I give my colleagues the opportunity to speak here, I just want to preface our comments with the fact that our, we're going to have to be limited in how we respond because much of what the comments were focused on are subject to bargaining, which makes it, uh, you know, limited, it limits what we can say about that. I would say that please continue to engage with us. Uh, we got a lot of emails from any of you. We, you, you heard about the number of written public comments. Uh, even if you don't get a response from us, that doesn't mean we're not reading it. It's just because of it being subject to bargaining, it limits what we're able and how we're able to respond. With that being said, who wants to respond? No one wants to respond? Good, uh, Commissioner Labar, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. I, uh, I, I think it was impactful to ask us what we're willing to do. I think the work that so many county employees do, uh, is vital, obviously, and is not always uh, in, in the headlines, um, but it, but is critically important. Um, is my hope, just as one commissioner, I, I, I think I speak for everybody at this table uh, that we can, we can come to, uh, an agreement that is negotiated where we feel it is as equitable and fair as possible, uh, where it is doable from a financial perspective. And where it does not create unneeded division within the organization. I don't know exactly what that looks like. Uh, I do know that is foremost in my mind on this question and I take uh, none of the input that's been given by, uh, ASME members and, 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 and others of, of both locals uh, lightly. Uh, it is impactful, it's heard, and I don't have a resolution for you in this moment. Uh, but I do hear what you are saying and, and seek to achieve an outcome that is aligned with that to the extent it's possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Labar for kicking, for kicking us off. Um, I don't want to go first. I appreciate everybody who came in person. Um, I haven't had time yet to look through everything that we got over email, but I will. Like Commissioner Labar, I'm not sure what next steps look like yet, but I'm committed to working with my colleagues and administration to come up with an equitable, equitable solution. And I just want to say all of you that spoke from various units of our, um, organization, I really do appreciate all the work that you do. I was not on the board during like the darkest days of the pandemic, but I did live, I do live in Washington County and I was here during those. And I really felt and saw what you all were doing and I can tell you just as one person, we wouldn't have gotten through those darkest days without all of you. Um, and especially to the twenty-four hour crisis health workers, I really, really, really appreciate you. And I think that like the stark difference between what you're being, you know, suggested as an offer right now, I'm premium pay compared to our deputies, like it should be, there should be parity there because the work that you're doing is just as needed in our, in our county, if not more needed during the pandemic when, um, and we're still dealing with this, but mental health issues have skyrocketed since the beginning of the pandemic. So I just want to name that here. I really, really appreciate all of you, the twenty-four hour crisis workers, like what you're doing is super vital. Um, I don't think people realize that it's twenty-four hour and I think that just needs to be amplified. We, um, there are tons of people who appreciate all of that work and you've been a lifeline too. So thank you so much. And I look forward to reading through some of the emails that we received because I have not had time yet, but thank you for showing up. I know it's not easy to work all day and then come to our meeting. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, to all the speakers, thank you for coming today and expressing your concerns. Um, I don't know if folks remember, but when we had the sheriff's, um, POM, COM, uh, premium pay before us, I had a lot of questions at the time and I believe that unfortunately, everything that you've expressed is, uh, is correct. And I think that the county has let me, let me say this, the way it was framed to us when I asked questions at that board meeting is that the five thousand dollars was coming from the federal money, the ARPA money, and that five thousand dollars was coming from the sheriff as a match. Again, this gets to what I said earlier. When we think of the sheriff's budget as its own separate entity, this is the kind of stuff that happens because it's not his own budget and his own money. It's ultimately county money. And so really what happened is we gave five thousand dollars of ARPA money and five thousand dollars of county money to, to the sheriff's deputies. Um, and what's being, what's being said now is why are we being treated any differently? I think that's a very fair and valid thing for our employees to be saying and to frame it as, oh, the sheriff is matching. That is, um, really, uh, in some ways, a misleading way to frame it. Um, and so I think to some degree, I'm concerned because a lot of what's being talked about is symptomatic to the fracturing of our organization. And I believe uh, our, our, our budget director and our finance director kind of alluded to this in their presentation and speaking about the fracturing of the organization in terms of from a budgetary perspective, right? Everybody's got their own little fiefdom and, you know, the courts, they're going to run the courts and the sheriff's going to run the sheriffs. Ultimately, the buck stops with the Board of Commissioners on financial issues, on employee issues. That's, that's where the buck stops. And so to have each department kind of going out on their own and doing their own thing when it comes to this kind of stuff means that we are stuck with situations like this. Is it financially viable to give every county employee a ten thousand dollar premium pay? I don't know. I, it's going to be a lot of money if that's what we end up doing. And so, but why did we not consider that when we were thinking about the money for the sheriff's office? In the context of, you know, the, the resources that they were going to get. Unfortunately, I think, well, not unfortunately, I think we need to re evaluate how we as an organization look at each of our different units and how we treat each different unit. And I think ultimately the board is going to have to pull back some of the autonomy that we've given to each of our individual units so that we don't get stuck in an embarrassing situation like this. I hope that we can rectify it because what's been said is, is correct. It's, it's the sentiment that's being expressed is absolutely understandable. And I think unless we can pull back on some of the autonomy that we've given some of our separate uh, you, they're not separate units, but units that see themselves in somewhat of a separate way. I don't think that we're going to be able to resolve issues like this. This is, this is a systemic issue, not isolated to this specific instance.
Commissioner Sanders, is that a hand or, no, okay. Anybody, any friends on the side of the room? No, we're good. Okay. All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out. As you said, you're going to get a lot of empathy from all of us on the board, but you know, you want tangible outcomes, uh, and it is something that all of us uh, really care about and want to see a solution to. We don't get, we don't get this much public comment about very many things. So rest assured that we are looking at it. Uh, for those of you from public health that came out, I just want to just give a special thank you to all of you. Um, because I know that many people in public health outside of the nurses were working the mass vaccination clinics and the pop-up clinics. I went to many of them. Um, when all of that was happening. So I know that people were doing, it was all hands on deck. Uh, and many people were out there on the front lines too. So thank you for that. We're going to move on now to liaison reports. Who we got liaison report? No liaison report. Oh, Commissioner Labar, what you got?
Thanks, Chair. The continuum of care had, uh, boy, a, a meeting north of three hours a couple of weeks ago uh, that was looking at, uh, a number of items that I think will be, uh, directly relevant, uh, to this body. Um, just to highlight them, uh, the, the, the biggest ones to be on the lookout is that with the COC members, the points that were highlighted uh, broadly were the need for increased amounts of safe, accessible and affordable housing targeted to households experiencing homelessness. And then the other part was more engagement, uh, of those with relevant lived experience. The reason I'm highlighting this is not just to perform, uh, as I know our chair, uh, wants us to do uh, sufficient duty in our liaison reports, but many of the issues that we deal with on a one-to-one basis as commissioners and then, uh, certainly as a body uh, have, have direct impact, uh, on this or directly impacted by it. So I highlighted, flag it, we've got our next COC board meeting coming up, uh, Wednesday, July nineteenth. That'll be three to five. Uh, held virtually. I am our, our point person there now, but all are welcome. Uh, and so I highlight that. Um, one other, since I'm on the mic and really warmed up and ready to go. Uh, we did have a good CMH executive committee meeting. Um, there'll be a lot of detail coming here, uh, when CMH presents on the village, uh, that I am excited about. And sort of stay, stay tuned on that. Uh, and I think that's it for me, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for doing sufficient duty. Uh, Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. I have, um, an update on the Commission on Aging, even though I didn't get to, to attend the last meeting. The lovely Ashley Hall did. Um, but one thing that I just want to say, this Friday, um, from one to three PM, there is a Safe Aging Town Hall. Um, it is at the Ypsilanti Township Civic Center. There will be, um, a number of things discussed. Um, scams on the internet is one of them. Um, and personal and home safety, and we'll have folks in the sheriff's department there as well as Congresswoman Dingle and members of the Commission on Aging, um, and a number of resource tables from various organizations that serve older adults. So just flagging that this Friday, June ninth from one to three. Um, and the Commission on Aging has done a really good job setting this up. Um, special shout out to Brenda McKinney who came up with the idea a few months ago and has taken charge. So, um, hopefully folks, if they're free, will be able to attend. That's all.
He says one to three.
One to three this Friday at the Ypsilanti Township Civic Center.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. There another hand that I saw that I might miss? Okay. Okay, I'll share one. Uh, I'll share the Board of Health. We, we had a couple of really interesting presentations as we always do. Uh, we had, those of you that were on the board last term, might remember some conversation around the pollution prevention program. Uh, we're going to be taking another look at that soon. I think we'll have a presentation within the next, here, I, I expect we'll have a presentation within the next few months um, about taking a look at how we might move forward with that. Uh, I had a fantastic presentation about the Health Department's Health Equity Council. Um, they did a lot of really interesting work with, um, funding and supporting community programming. Uh, a lot of great pictures of the successes. Uh, they're going to be funded to do another round of that. So stay tuned for more news there. Um, I, I, we'll ask them to give a report to all of us about that one too. Cause it's like, it was a good feel-good moment. You need that from time to time. Uh, that we're actually doing some good work out there. So, uh, thank you to the team there for that one. Also, we've had some conversations about the gun violence data that the, we shared about, um, that was presented at the Board of Health a few months ago now. I, I expect that we'll be getting a presentation here about it. Uh, it's, it's pretty dense and it needs to be explained in a particular kind of way. It's got a lot of really interesting uh, graphs that, uh, you know, I won't be able to do justice by trying to explain without. So, uh, stay tuned for that. All right, we'll move on now. Great. All right, now, oh, I see Nathan and I know that it's about to be a special order of business time. So I gotta open a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed three hundred North Z Road Brownfield Redevelopment Project, Scioto Township. Here in our special order of business and public hearing, you get three minutes. Same rules apply. You can come on up, state your name, where you're joining us from. You get, uh, follow a color-coded thing there. Anybody here for, uh, the special order of business? You want to say anything about it, Nathan? Or, no? Yeah, go ahead. You're here. Got to make it worth it for you to be here, right?
I get to get dressed up every once in a while, so, and that's worth it. Um, I'm Nathan Vogel with OCD Brownfield Redevelopment Coordinator. Thank you for uh, taking this up. I do have Mark Smith, the developer owner and his consultant, uh, Brett Stunts. If there's more questions, if we need to dive down a little bit into this, but you all might recall the uh, commercial rehabilitation district that you all authorized after the township approved it and they did follow that up with a five-year abatement period that could have gone from zero to ten. The developer asked for ten, they authorized five. Um, and of course that plays into the tax capture. I kind of explained this in the memo. Um, the developers looking to do a complete rehabilitation of the, of the building which requires extensive asbestos and other hazardous materials, abatement, interior demolition, making it ready for, uh, kind of as an incubator for all the businesses that he cultivates in his various facilities, including of course, uh, several others that he, the, that he owns, including College of Business, um, in downtown Ypsilanti, which is undergoing renovation. Um, and this would authorize about two point seven million maximum in eligible activities. Uh, I was just talking to Brett Stuns from SME. They are talking to Eagle. I'll be, I'll be brought into those conversations with a potential grant next fiscal year that could lower that number. Uh, no promises, but, um, Eagle seems to have a little bit more grant money these days than in prior years. Um, as you know, two S Michigan and downtown Ypsilanti, we got to seven hundred and fifty thousand for that project. Uh, the, the one on the north side of Ann Arbor, the DTE site Broadway Park, that's an older one, but that's half million. So, uh, we'll look into that and that could potentially lower, uh, the cost of the, the two point seven. Most of that two point seven is considered non-environmental, but sort of the asbestos and demolition side, there is some soil remediation required um, behind the, the building in the old, uh, I believe the, the old detention pond. Um, it's a relatively quick payoff, I think fourteen years. That, and the township did put a cap on that of 20 with, with our recommendation. Cause instead of it open-ended and kind of going on forever, let's make sure that there's a maximum in place. And so your resolution reflects the township decision to, to put a cap on it as well.
Thank you. While we have you here, do you want to give us a teaser for that great report that I saw the draft of at Brownfield recently?
Yeah. So we moved to a two-year annual report with the pandemic. We did a 19 and 20. Cause we kind of skipped a year and said, and then we said, two years makes more sense because we have a lot of investment in one year and then less than next. So we've got another two-year report coming out, which will cover 2021 and 2022. And we'll certainly share it with you. It's very close to being done. A lot of great accomplishments. A lot of grant funds that we're able to leverage through the Downriver Community Conference, which is EPA funding. And of course our own funding, which has been very robust. And so we're really excited to share the work we've been doing. It's all good stuff.
Excellent. Well, stay tuned, friends. All right. Thank you, Nathan. If there's no one here to give comments, anybody online that wants to? Nope, I'm, I'm closing the public hearing. Want to do it? All right, it's closed. Excellent. Look for someone to move the appointments. Thank you. Wow. What is happening here? Okay, great. Does anybody want to pull either one for separate consideration or no? Any comments or discussion? No. I would just say for the reparations, the Advisory Council on Reparations, we weren't able to fill all the slots right now. We're going to be reposting. I will, we'll work with the Clerk's Office to do some more targeted recruitment to be able to fill all of the sectors. And then I will look to consult with all of you because we're also looking for a good geographic representation across the county on that. So we want to make sure we do that. But wanted, yours is, yes, yours currently is. I wanted to make sure that we got some of the appointments done and we're able to move forward. Excellent. Roll call vote on this.
Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Labarque.
Yes.
Mr. Light. Mr. Marchewski.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie. Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Somerville.
Yes.
And Commissioner Beaman.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to move that? There's like, okay, anybody want to pull any of that discussion? Sometimes there's good discussion out of this. Never know. See you. This, this, let's discuss.
Ever. Thank you, Chair. One of the communications that we received. I don't know if we ever want to think as a board about how we might want to address this, but we get communications from counties who are. Making specific amendments or send us specific letters about resolutions they've passed in support of the Second Amendment. I want to be very clear that I support the Constitution in entirety, but I do feel that it's time for common sense gun control. And we may want to think at some point about a response to those letters that we get with those resolutions and them. I would like to flat out reject them, but that's rude. So maybe there's a response we could get.
You know, you've mentioned this before and then let's do it. Let's work on this together. Cause I think this is a great idea.
All right, great.
We want to have them have a conversation during their consent agenda and say, we got a communication from Washtenaw County.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Let's do it. Commissioner Robbie. Really? Come on. You've been pretty quiet today. Okay, you're getting me worried if you keep neverminding us. I mean, something's.
There, there was a great public official once that would, that would react to items. That they didn't agree with by saying received, but not acknowledged. So perhaps we could do something like that.
Okay. All right. So this is good discussion. We have a plan somewhat at least. I like it. All right. Other, any other discussion here? Now things are moving. Okay. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? None. All right. Consent agenda passed. All right, let's move on to the resolutions. If anybody want to move the, you know, these are all, because we're in our summer schedule now. So for our viewers at home and in the audience. We only meet once per month during the summer months unless we have to call a special meeting. Our norm during that period of time is to move all of the items through a single reading. So if someone is so inclined, you could just, you know, Commissioner Scott could just read all of them if she wanted to. I mean, or Commissioner Labarque, anybody else could. Maybe Commissioner Somerville wants to take a whack at it. No? Some, anybody? Commissioner Scott. All right.
Third time was the charm on raising my hand there apparently. The resolutions I have for you tonight are all final reading, as noted by the Chair. A, a resolution approving the acceptance of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority HUD Home A R P Grants. Homelessness Prevention Program in the amount of 139,673 dollars in the Housing Navigation Program, H M P, in the amount of 150,000. Authorizing the county administrator to sign the grant amendment and contracts related to this ward. B, a resolution author approving the acceptance of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Emergency Rental Assistance. Slash Housing Stability Services Program Grant Amendment in the amount of 518,400 dollars for calendar year 2023. Authorizing the county administrator to sign this grant amendment and contracts related to this award. C, a resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, S A M S A. Grant application for the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Improvement and Advancement Grant. Two, A, a resolution approving the Cooperative Reimbursement Grant from the Michigan Department of. Human Services for the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney for the period of October 1, 23 through September 30th, 28. B, a resolution ratifying the signature of the Board of Commissioners Chair. On the application for the fiscal year 2024 to 2028, Title nine, D, nope, four. That's a Roman numeral. Title four, D Cooperative Reimbursement Agreement with the Michigan Department. Of Health and Human Services Office of Child Support for the Friend of the Court in an amount not to exceed 27,612,060 dollars for the five-year contract. Beginning October 1st, 23, with an end date of September 30th, 2028, from the Washtenaw County Trial Court. C, a resolution ratifying the electronic application submission to the Michigan State Court Administrative Office for the Fiscal Year 2024 Michigan Drug Court Grant Program. D, a resolution approving the SimCog Planning Assistance Grant Stormwater Basin Study Grant. In the amount of 59,973 dollars for the period of July 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2025. E, a resolution to adopt the Brownfield Plan for 300 North Sea Grove Scioto Township, 48103. F, a resolution approving the 2023 first quarter structural and non-structural general fund budget. Adjustments and reclassifying 30 F T E positions through the P D Q process. G, a resolution amending the 2023 Board of Commissioners Annual Calendar of Meetings. H, a resolution supporting the Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson's proposed 177 million. Fiscal year 2024 budget to ensure full implementation of proposal to and address historic divestment in election administration. I, a resolution urging the Michigan Legislature to end the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol products. And repeal a local preemption of tobacco licensure and sales policies in the state of Michigan. J, a resolution proclaiming June 19th as the county observance of Juneteenth. K, a resolution declaring June Pride Month in Washtenaw County. L, a resolution honoring the life and career of Pete Balios. M, a resolution honoring the life and service of Barbara Bergman. And finally, three, approval of claims.
Excellent. That was, that was some good reading.
Thank you.
Does anybody support it? Woo, shy today. What is going on? Okay, excellent. Does anybody want to pull any for separate consideration? Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to. Pull for separate consideration, the item two under single readings, E, Brownfield Plan. As well as item F.
Great.
And then I do have some questions on other items, but I don't wish to pull them.
Cool. We're going to get all of these pulled. We're keeping track. Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, under, under resolutions, I'd like to pull item two, I.
Say again, which one? You say two, I? I think that's what you want. Okay. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, I need to have H, two H pulled. That's the Secretary Vincent one. There's an, an update that it needs to be made to it. Okay. So everybody, you got them all? Everybody, any other ones? Are we good over here? We got them? All right. Excellent. Does any, let, let's just knock out the other ones real quick. Any discussion on any of the other ones that were not pulled? Commissioner Labarque.
Just briefly, want to thank the C M H staff on that S A M S A C C B H C grant. That is continued good work on their part and just want to highlight it. Thanks.
Thank you. I think you had a hand. Commissioner Robbie.
Chair. Under item one, B. On the acceptance of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Emergency Rental Assistance. Amendment, I noticed in the packet. And actually in the summary here as well, it says that the remaining 1.5 million dollars in Sarah funding will be returned after amendment. Can somebody explain what that means? Why are we sending 1.5 million dollars in Sarah funding back to the state?
I believe we have, we have guests that are here to speak on that. Is that right, Andrew? Or this is for other items?
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice, nice to see you this evening. My apologies. I believe Nathan, was Morgan going to speak to this item, what you're saying? Okay.
Special guests. All right.
Greetings. I am here, Commissioners. So in regards to the return of the funding back to Misha, Misha allocated a formulaic. Amount of funds for Sarah, for Sarah two. And so they recalculated what this next iteration of what the Sarah program would be. And this is a result of their calculations. So this is at no fault of ours for not spending the money down efficiently or effectively. This is just a result of a formula that they provided for Sarah two allocation that now needs to be. Readdressed and changes made to allow for the Housing Stability Program. This is happening to all C O Cs who received this funds. This is not unique to Washtenaw County.
Do we have any sense of what the state's doing with that money or how it's being reallocated?
I have not heard what they're intending to do with those funds that they are recouping back from various C O Cs. What tends to happen in the past? And I don't know about the restraints that they have from the Federal Treasury Department for these funds. But what could happen is another program could be provided to communities as a result of these funds. But they have not named specifically what they will do with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this particular item? None. All right. We have additional special guests online for some of the other items in this set that we're going to be voting on. Thank you, Morgan. Go on. Thank you. We're bringing somebody in, right? All right.
They are present in the room.
They're present in the room. Okay, please join us at the podium.
Who are we?
Any, who wants to go for whichever one is first on the agenda here?
Chair, if, if I may, I'd be happy to introduce them. We have representatives tonight from both the trial court and the friend of the court division, I mean, Christie, Christie Bray. As well as Anne Larraini, who is the first Assistant Prosecuting Attorney in the Prosecutor's Office who oversees. Oh goodness, Anne, please correct me.
Oh, no problem. My name is Anne Larraini. My name is Anne Larraini and I oversee the Child Support Division in the Prosecutor's Office. And I've been working with the county since 1994 and with the Child Support Division since 1995. A lot of people don't realize that there is a civil division in the Prosecutor's Office. I'll keep this brief. Why do we exist? It's federally mandated by Title, by Title four, D. Where we establish paternity and child support and we receive referrals from the Office of Child Support. We work closely with the Department of Health and Human Services Office of Child Support and the Friend of the Court. Christie Bray and my division work closely. We get the orders established. And the Friend of the Court enforces those orders. We have three legal assistants in my division, one paralegal, one attorney, that would be me, an investigator, and of course our office manager. Anyone in the state of Michigan can use our services. They can request assistance with obtaining support and establishing paternity. And if you, you, you may be actually required to do so if you are getting benefits from the state. If you're getting any Medicaid food stamps, then that is a requirement to pursue support and establish paternity. We review referrals to determine whether or not we can file a case. We hold interviews with custodial and non-custodial parents. We prepare the legal complaints, file them with the court. We have a contract with a DNA Diagnostic Center where we do the buckle swab testing and do the DNA paternity testing. We receive requests from other states and we send requests to other states to obtain paternity and child support orders. That's an overview. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, I know you were really interested and we wanted to also have, have you here so you had a venue to talk about these things. Cause we know that many residents aren't aware. Like you said, people don't know that there's a civil division within the Prosecutor's Office.
So a couple, a couple of questions and transparency. I have utilized the services in the past. One of the reasons that I wanted a presentation is that I find there are a lot of participants that have no idea. That your services are available. And so I was interested in finding out. Do you conduct satisfaction surveys with your customers? How do we know whether or not they feel as though they're being treated appropriately, professionally? I'm wondering, I don't have a better term, so I'm going to use return on investment. I'm, I'm wondering whether or not you, what data you keep. To show how successful you are or not. And making collections on behalf of our children. I'd also like to know whether or not, who lets customers know that you exist? So their case managers, you know, are they sharing that information? How do they know? I. Just happen to know. I just happened to ask and got a response. But I don't believe that that is a commonplace situation. So. Wondering those questions.
Sure. So let me start with, how do you find out about us? Mainly it is. Mainly it is people who are receiving benefits from the state. It is a requirement to get those benefits. To go through the child support program. So if, if someone is receiving food stamps. Then the, then a referral is sent to our Office of Child Support, who then sends a referral to us. And then we would establish the support, we would establish the paternity. And then our Friend of the Court enforces it. So we have these three partners. So as far as advertising, you're right. It, it's, there's not. You'll see, you'll see billboards a lot of times about the dad advantage and getting paternity established and how important it is. But it generally will affect people who are getting benefits. It does, anybody though can use the services. So I don't know if that's satisfactory answers or question, but that is the main. That is how we mainly get our cases.
So if I could follow up and ask, so I've got a, I'm receiving services. I come through your office because of that. What am I provided with in terms of if I feel like I'm being disparitively treated? Or, you know, what's the, how, how, how do people handle that? What information does your office give about next steps? So if they feel like they're not receiving the services appropriately. What is their next step? How do they know? Okay, I'm not happy with you. Who am I supposed to talk to next? And what is your office's obligation to the customer?
We have a grievance procedure. So that is what we would provide to the, to the customer at that point.
So it's, it, it is, would you say that that is a procedure that is shared after they complain? Or are they provided with, you know, there are places that you do business with and they kind of give you a pamphlet about this is, these are steps. If you have a customer that is not aware or. Does not have experience advocating. Does not have experience advocating for themselves. Then they may just walk away disgruntled. When they come through your office, I'm asking, is there a pamphlet or some sort of process that explains to them what happens? If?
Actually, I was just going to say when we mail out our, our initial. Reach out to the, to the customers, we provide them with the type, with a pamphlet of the type of case that we think we may end up filing. Because there are three types of cases that we could be filing. And then we have a telephone interview with them and we explain. What we are able to do and find out. What they need. And then we determine whether or not we can file the case legally, whether we're, we're satisfying the statute.
So thank you for that. I'm having a senior moment. I had a follow up. Oh, the follow up was, how, how can? How does one get data? About? Without divulging people's, you know, personal information. How do we know how successful your unit is?
We have, we have contract performance standards with the state that we are required to meet. And. We, we run reports to keep track of that. As far as. You know, how many cases we're doing, how many orders we're doing.
Your collection rates.
Right. Well, collection would be friend of the court. We get the orders established. So I can tell you, you know, approximately how many orders we did in a three month period. But then, once we get that order established, then our friend of the court would handle all the collection issues. And I'm sure Kristy can answer the questions about the collection issues.
I think that's sufficient for me.
Okay. Please reach out to me if you have any other question.
You've got. Literature.
Yes. Yes, I will give that to you.
She's been very excited for your presentation, so I'm glad you brought literature. Other questions? Not seeing any.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, another special guest.
Yes, Chair, your next guest will be Kristi Bray, friend of the court.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you, Andrew. As Andrew stated, my name is Kristi Bray and I am the Director of the Front of the Court. My office handles, it's kind of an extension. We pick up where Ann starts. So once she establishes the case, the prosecutor establishes the case, or we have newly filed actions. Or there's a divorce action that's filed in the, in the trial court. Friend of the court often then picks up with custody, parenting time and child support. So often, an issue of any variety of different topics could get referred to the front of the court for an investigation. We would ultimately meet with the families, sit down, come up with either a consent agreement or ultimately issue a recommendation. Suggesting what we think based on our interview and conversations with the parties. What should happen with custody, parenting time and child support? Once that recommendation goes up to the bench, the court, they either adopt that or if there's objections, they, there's then a subsequent hearing on those particular issues. So. Ultimately, when an order is entered, then my office is tasked with the responsibility of making sure that there's compliance with those orders. Oftentimes, parties can file their own request for child support enforcement, medical support enforcement, or parenting time enforcement. And our office, I have three different divisions, two of them that are responsible for the enforcement matters with respect to child support and then parenting time. So much of what we do, as Anna indicated previously, we do have performance measures that were held to certain standards. Ann's office is responsible for establishing paternity and setting support orders. And then the front of the court with respect to the CRP funding picks up with child support collection on current, collection on child support arrears. And then the cost effectiveness of our office. The CRP funding specifically reimburses where eligible for up to 66% reimbursement for all direct and indirect costs. And over this five year term, we're looking at possibly reimbursements is up to $27 million. Commissioner Sanders, if I can just go back to a question that you asked, Ms. Larrany. In terms of asking or knowing if our customers are satisfied, the State Court Administrative Office, they sent out a public satisfaction survey, which I think is actually coming out in September, mid-September. That does run for, I think, a couple of weeks. We try to collect as many surveys as we can. The difficulty or challenge that sometimes we have with that is we do need folks coming into the trial court and actually handing out those surveys. And then that information does get collected and gets sent, it is sent back to the State Court Administrator's Office to see how we are doing on a local level. Friend of the court also has an annual review. It does get published out into the newspaper for public comment and that is due each year. The chief judge will actually review my performance and make sure that I'm in compliance with many of our mandatory, our state mandated functions. And then that gets submitted, like I said, usually August 1st. In terms of other information that we share with the public so that they know about our services. Ann Shop often will provide a handbook, a friend of the court handbook that provides the services that we do offer. As well as a smile program that stands for Start Making It Little Bull for Everyone. That is a program that many of our folks, our customers are required to complete before they're eligible for a divorce. So that program alone talks about the importance of co-parenting and being timely and communicating. Your employment information, address updates and those sorts of things. So those are some things that we do that we share with the, with the customers that we serve. And then also if there are complaints or that they do have concerns, we do have a grievance process in place. And usually if there's a complaint about an office operation or an employee. That will come to my attention. I'm responsible for investigating, ultimately issuing out my response to the grievance. If folks are unsatisfied with that grievance response that I provide, it does get elevated to the chief judge. So there's a two-step process to that if they're not happy with my response. Apologize, I was trying to take some notes. I think that's, for the most part, that's what my office does. If anybody has any other questions?
Thank you. Anybody got additional button? Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
So I just wanted to follow up and say thank you for sharing that information. As Chair Hyde said, I was very excited. Because I've had personal experience with the friend of the court. I have a child that has had experience. But I also have been an advocate for single mothers for about 25 years now. Actually. My, I think one of my first interactions with, with Commissioner Somerville before she became Commissioner Somerville. Was because I was advocating on behalf of someone who had a case. Yes, and, and thank goodness. Representative Senator Irwin. His office took care of it. My concern is that in my own personal experience and in. Receiving information from others, there. Can be a theme of. Sort of like, you know, you should be grateful that you're getting anything. And I don't ever remember receiving. Any type of information that would show me that there is a process. And, you know, I, no disrespect to the caseworkers. But I'm just going to say some of them are not kind. And when you have someone that is already in a financial bind. And they're trying to figure out how to take care of their child. And they come to an office that is supposed to support them. And they're a grown individual. They should be talked to as though they're a grown customer. That were they not there? Those jobs wouldn't be there either. So I asked if you could come and present because I wanted to make that information more public. For anybody that may be listening to this, to understand that they have recourse. That they do not have to allow. Anyone to mistreat them, be belittling to them, not explain the process. Or even go so far as to not want to provide to them the process. You know, if I ask for a supervisor. Who is your supervisor? It's not optional for you to tell me. You should share that information. This is not private in the sense that I don't get to know what the next step is. So I, and then I was. I took some notes here. Can't tell you what to do. But in my experience, maybe one of the things that I would suggest is that instead of doing sort of this annual. Evaluation where, as you said, people would actually need to come in. After each encounter, people should be given the opportunity to give feedback. That is a more dependable way to find out whether or not you are really serving people the way that they should be served. Because otherwise you're not getting, you're not getting a representative sample. So I appreciate you coming and sharing. I hope that my comments did not come off as though I'm trying to beat you or your staff up. But it did come from a, a position of frustration. And if you can't already tell, I don't like bullies. And so when I hear from mothers that are trying to feed their children and fathers. And feel like they're not getting. Respect. It makes the hairs on the back of my neck stand up. So I just wanted to make this more public so that people understand there is recourse. They have places that they can go. They can talk to their representatives, but they shouldn't have to do that. They ought to be able to go through your office. Appropriately and have it taken care of. So I thank you both for coming.
No, I thank you very much for the feedback and will certainly top up my management team and, and continue to put the, a heavy emphasis on customer service. And always constantly trying to improve our customer service. So I appreciate that.
All right, I think, I think you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We got one final guest, I believe. Is it Harry? All right, Harry.
Good evening. I'm here to answer questions that we have on the stormwater basin, SEMCOG grant.
SEMCOG grant, friends, any questions about SEMCOG grant?
Stormwater management, the most interesting topic.
It's exciting stuff. Commissioner Robbie.
I couldn't pass up the opportunity. I, I did look at this in the agenda and was intrigued by it. It seems like a pretty straightforward grant. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the money's being used to evaluate our stormwater basins across the county. And to make recommendations on how to improve them or just to evaluate them?
To make recommendations on how to make them more resilient, to see if we're on target with our infiltration goals and our rules, to tweak the rules if that need be. And to provide data to locals as well as ourselves on. If we are going, going to monitor the maintenance, long-term maintenance and inspection and condition. Assessment that we have the data to know what. We'd be looking for, what are the higher percentage things that fail? So we could be more efficient and effective in inspecting them and looking for ways to resolving issues with ponds, particularly assessing. What the consequence of failure would be downstream?
These are largely ponds or retention basins that are permitted in various types of developments?
Yes. So we're going to first look at the ones we own, but since we review a lot and other communities use our rules, we'd be looking at some that went through our office that we don't own.
That they permitted, basically.
Permitted or just simply reviewed and didn't even see construction.
Thank you.
I think I saw Commissioner Somerville and then we'll go to Commissioner Sanders. Oh, you were just waving. Hey. All right, Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
So I think I would be run out of office if I did not ask this question on behalf of some of my residents, specifically Stonebridge. Is how do you, how does one get a copy? Of sort of your maintenance schedule? How, how might I be able to see, okay, this, this drain is scheduled to be assessed or worked on? You know, during this timeframe or this year or this quarter. So that people can be better informed. So I can be better.
Yeah, yeah. So. In terms of. Looking what you would expect going forward for inspection and maintenance and activity on any particular section of drain. We could provide a report of over the last five years, exactly what has been done, which kind of directs. Anecdotally, the field staff in reactive, or proactive. Inspections for any particular drain. We tend to also weigh heavily the, the service requests that come in and, and handle those that come in first. If we see your service requests that come in over and over again in the same drain, but something that they focus on, if it's a problem that's outside of their purview, then that's, that's a larger conversation. And Stonebridge is in that category.
So I, whatever you have, I would love to, we see if you can provide like historical data. And then I think my last question would be. Do you grade? Drains. So like we, we grade bridges.
Yeah.
Do we do that for our drains? And can I get access to that information?
Yes. We do specifically grade our stormwater basins and we went through and graded all our open channels during the SAW grant implementation, five, seven years ago. So we have that online. I believe it's on the public facing site, but if, if not, we can see it internally and we can give you the report for that.
I like one more question. New developments?
Yes.
Pardon my lack of knowledge, but can you help me understand if we have new developments that are being proposed? How does that? How do we review that in relationship to storm drains if? You know, that development is going to empty into, you know, a reservoir that affects that storm drain? I'm certain that wasn't as cause of ISIS. I probably could have made it, but.
Yeah, so new developments are. Reviewed under stricter standards than they ever have been. So typically, we would be looking at them meeting requirements for. Water quality and kind of the smaller storms that occur more frequently, the storms that affect erosion in channels and then the, the flood events. So they are looked at in terms of what the. Hydraulics, that the water coming down to that basin looks like before construction versus after construction. So that the detention has to hold the volume of water that is equivalent to what would have been running off the land beforehand. So that it holds it until the storm passes by, releases it slowly. And that is required to be infiltrated to a certain extent if the soils can tolerate that.
So would you say that you were? That your office is, I, I won't say partner, but would you say your office has some voice in? Proposals for new developments that may affect? Our storm drains?
Well, we like to think that we treat each development equally and that it has the equal ultimate. Protection of the downstream areas based on the rules that we've created so that they. Don't create a situation after construction that is worse than the existing condition, not the pre-existing forest or prairie, but the existing landscape.
Got a lot going on that you're interested in. That's why we had a, you know, my show. It was good stuff.
Feeling lonely. Nobody's weighing in.
Well, Commissioner Robbie has something to say. So Commissioner Robbie, go ahead.
I mostly, I mostly have a follow up because I didn't want Commissioner Sanders to feel alone, you know? I, all the questions that you asked actually were spot on. I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you asked it because that is, you know, that's the concern, right? Every time there's a new development, how's that going to impact the broader, you know, watershed, the storm drains? I think the questions that you asked were, were spot on. I did want to drill down a little bit more in understanding the detention basin piece. I mean. Oftentimes, these basins are sort of like throwaway features. Just to be candid, like at these development sites. Developers kind of just stick them in a corner, put a fence around them. They collect plastic bags and other trash and they just kind of are. You know, what are they? I mean. So is part of this evaluation not, you know? It's okay if the answer is no, I'll still vote for it, but is part of this evaluation looking at the? Sort of like human-facing utilization of these, or is it just purely from a utilitarian standpoint, like how much do they infiltrate? And sort of the part B to that comment slash question is, I noticed that a lot of these basins don't have plantings associated with them. They're just kind of like mowed surfaces that lead down on a, on a steep incline into a basin. And so would it not help with infiltration were we to have some sort of planting? Component to those? I don't know if we can require that. I don't know exactly what the drain code allows you to require, but would it be possible to have? would it be possible to have native plantings be a component of those basins on the exterior, like on the surrounding incline? There was probably not going to be that much surface that you could do plantings on, but there's going to be some, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the, the last part of your question, we do require native plantings and the plant, the plantings, the actual schedule of plantings are reviewed. And if it's ours, it is inspected during construction. So if we're simply reviewing it for others, then it's up to the other local municipality to see whether it conforms. The problem is that on the bottom of the basin, a part of this evaluation will show what actually grows there five years down the road as opposed to what you planted there. So again, seeing if we can tweak our rules a little bit to say, well, here's what's going to grow there. So let's, let's go with these three species instead of the 20 we threw out there. Um, and if it's cattails or something else, then you're looking at a problem with the infiltration, not with plantings. But yes, over time they do create soil structure. So does free saw, saw cycle. But it's a balancing act and tried to get the plants to establish in an area that's designed to be inundated frequently. And in terms of throwaway items, they, uh, since the, this grant that we're talking about is looking at the rules after 2014. So the ponds are placed in the area where the soil infiltrates the best. So we have a meeting even before pet gets to paper on designing anything and saying, here's where your stormwater ponds will be based on the soil infiltration tests. So the first thing we do is sit down with the developer, or the, I'm sorry, the owner and the developer and their engineer if we can, and get the soil test started. So the soil test dictate where the basin will go. So it's not just in the corner now. It's in the place where it will do the most work. Um, in terms of the aesthetic side or the human use element component of it, we get outside of the regulatory realm a little bit. And we work with individual homeowners associations who are interested in our green infrastructure management in doing invasive species removal, workdays, burns, cleanups, those sorts of things.
Yeah. I mean, I certainly think that the um, more recent developments seem to have a better incorporation. But I, I think often of like Arborland, right? Cause you go to Kroger in Arborland, it's like there's a pit in the ground with water in it and there's garbage bags that collect on the fence. I mean, it's not a very pretty sight.
Yeah, that's a tough sight.
And so I don't know, just, just a general comment, like I think we need, I mean, we are the Great Lakes State, people are going to be climate refugees here. Water, as you know, you're the water resources, um, you know, office. So obviously this is your mission, but making sure that we're looking to the water, not as like, let's put it in the back of the mall where nobody can see it and the plastic bags can collect in the water. But like making it a part of our human spaces as well. So.
It would not be built like that today. That is a.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's kind of what I was getting at, like the current, since you got there, things have really improved, but uh, but on that note, happy to support.
It's the board oversight that that is.
Yes, right, right, right.
Wow. Very nice. All right. Uh, well, good to see you, Harry. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody about any of the items excluding two E, F, H and I? No. Okay. Uh, well then I'll say a couple of things about the remaining ones before we vote and I just want to make it really clear that G is us amending the calendar uh, to amend the calendar for our July meeting to be on the 12th instead of the 5th. I recognize that the 5th might've been a challenging time, so we're changing it from the 5th to the 12th. So just wanted people to be with. The, the 5th or the 12th? Oh. But this guy can try to get another day. Was the, well, this, maybe this is a good opportunity to talk about it. Is the 5th not going to work or the 12th not going to work? Okay, it seemed, oh. All right. We're going with, it's here, we're going to go with the 12th. I'm sorry, Katie, or Commissioner Scott, my bad. No, we can't do that. Nope. Uh, uh, all right. There, there are a couple of other items in here that we're about to vote through, uh, as we go through it, just to make people aware, uh, for fun events that are coming up. So hopefully people will join us this Friday at nine AM outside the administration building, uh, for the pride flag raising. And then on June 20th at 10 AM for the Juneteenth flag raising. And with that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light? Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders? Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes. All right, moving on. Let's uh, go to E. I know this is a very exciting one. Brownfields are always fun. All right. So you pulled E. Uh, does anybody have any comments about E or questions? Commissioner Robbie?
I surprise, I have a question. Um, on the non-environmental, um, MSF eligible activities, uh, wondering Nathan, if you can answer some questions for me? Can you help me understand, it's particularly under the demo activities? Uh, what are, what's the brownfield plan paying for exactly? I'm, I guess what I'm having trouble understanding is so you have the interior demo, what is interior demo versus exterior demo? I assume that's prepping the inside of the building for it to be, but we're not paying for the exterior demo. Is that correct?
Right. So this is, uh, we've done this before with the Jiffy Food Safe Warehouse in downtown Chelsea where you had a shell of a building that was good, but obsolete because it was so old. And so usually that means you have to reconfigure structurally of the inside. And so all of that is eligible. We have an obsolete building that's too old, it doesn't serve its intended purpose. And so you're modifying the interior, but you're not demolishing the building itself.
That would, that would not be an eligible activity, or would it be?
It, it would be as well.
Would be, but they're not asking for it in this.
No, they're keeping the building, but modifying the interior, make it work for the intended use.
Okay. Site construction management, general conditions, 5%. Does that mean the brownfield plan is paying 5% of each of those?
Right. So there's these other associated supportive activities for any project. And so the approach, maybe when you were selling the authority, uh, you might remember, but we just took a more broad approach to accounting for a porta potty, let's say that a construction general contractor pays for that supports the overall project. But let's say that project is 10 million, the brownfield is 1 million. So 10% of that porta potty cost is a general condition cost that we attribute and we account for to account for the, the brownfield portion of the budget, the overall project cost. So we take general numbers that are kind of accepted industry-wide and we've got people on our authority like James Harless that kind of knows these numbers.
Oh, yeah, James.
It's an easier approach than, than asking the developer or his or her general contractor to come in and say, show us what that porta potty cost and then we're going to take 1.9% of that. So we just say three, five, 10%, depending on what we're talking about.
So what you're saying basically is the, the 572,000 in, in, in um, Eagle eligible activities plus the asbestos abatement, which is about half a million as well. Plus the interior demo represents about 5% of the total project, which is why we're willing to pay for the site construction management, general conditions on 5% of the project. Uh, let me look at this a little closer, make closer to make sure I'm um, uh, and, and we do have Brett here to clarify if I get this wrong, but I think in this case, uh, we took more of an industry standard rather than trying to come up with a percentage. I, I might've been uh, summarizing how we did it early on before we really knew how to handle this. And I think what we've done is gone to a standardized number. So if we get a, if we get a bill that comes in that we approve for the demolition, we will add a 5% markup to account for these site construction management and general conditions, uh, costs. So I might've misled you when I just. Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. So when, so the 5% is basically placed on each of the bills that you get and you're estimating that to be about $44,000? That's right. Okay. So you, you mark every, I, I get what you're saying. So you mark every bill up 5% to account for those.
That, that's, that's right. It's a 5% markup.
Okay. And then am I understanding this correctly, that the non-environmental activities are the asbestos abatement, the interior demo, the markup, and then the prep for the 381 work plan?
Right. Everything in that second table, that totals 2.186 million, that's, that's all of a non-environmental. Everything including contingency, including um, everything.
Right. Okay. Uh, on the asbestos abatement, like totally understand why, you know, that you know, should be included in a brownfield plan. I get it. I'm having a little bit more trouble with the interior demo side. Um, I know we've done it before. Uh, but that's kind of the piece that I'm a little bit hung up on. Can you, can you help me with that one a little bit?
I think this is a, um, a cost that the MEDC, the state of Michigan has said, it's an acknowledgement that a building that was built, a building that exists is better to, to keep it and to reuse it than demolish it. And so if part of the problem is you have a building that was built 50, 70 years ago, doesn't have proper clear spans, it doesn't have proper structural supports um, to meet modern demands. It's sort of an acknowledgement that, hey, we want to help a community or developer reuse that building. I think it comes down to that. Um, and so we're going to allow for these costs that are required to make this old building usable for today's uh, new use, today's requirements. That's the best way I can describe that, I think.
Okay, thanks.
So you got?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Uh, no, no, no. Okay. Anybody else on brownfield? Okay. Roll call vote on, on brownfield.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders? Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
It was a bit of a surprise. All right, uh, move on to, we got over here. F, F? Commissioner Robbie? Yeah. F is the budget item.
Oh, good. Anybody can tell me what page that's on as I'm flipping through.
Um, if so, if I could just really quickly before Nathan slips out, I do want to say one more thing about brownfield, if that's okay. I, I was willing to vote yes on this one because the non-environmental was kept really tight. And as I look at brownfields in the future, I just, I want to, you, we've already talked about this, but I want to make sure that's what I'm going to be looking at. So I just, and I voted no on the project, uh, getting a tax payment earlier, so. That's kind of what I figured with the cost of the asbestos removal. I figured that you probably had to rip most of the building out anyways. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Nice job.
Um, let's see, in the agenda packet, I think it's like page 490.
On board portal, it's, you know, just scroll through and.
Board portal?
Yeah, I got the board portal. You're.
How do you scroll directly to there?
No.
Anyways, okay, I will ask my question.
Ask your question.
Am I, am I, am I on?
You're on. Please ask your question.
All right. So I want to make sure that I fully understand this. We don't, um, I don't know if Greg's in the room or not, but.
Right there.
Oh, there you are. Oh, he's giving me the eyes. Okay. Saying, wow. Tear me down. It's different when he's on that side of me.
Right.
So I'm trying to, uh, I want to make sure I understand this. Uh, the, the, the team has done a really good job of trying to explain it to me. Um, and I think I mostly understand what we're doing here. Um, so correct me if I'm wrong. Now I think I understood what you guys outlined for me, but we're doing um, three things. We're adjusting, we're adjusting the budget based on the revenues that were realized based, based on the liquor and marijuana revenues based, and then we're adjusting based on the expenditures that we've committed ourselves to as a board. We're also doing the position adjustments for the supervisors. And we're allocating for, uh, we talked about it in the budget, quarterly budget review that you did, but about $4 million to um, the administrator for an organizational, non-structural salary adjustment. Did I use all the right language on that one? So those are the three things that are being done in this vote.
Um, everyone's nodding, just because the camera's not on them and there's no sound, but let the record reflect, there's a lot of nodding.
Let the record reflect that the nodding has occurred. Uh, so I just, I want to say a couple of things, I guess, on this as a, as a general thing. Not just based on the comments that we heard, although that was helpful, you know, and appreciated to hear. Um, but I would like to say as a general principle, that as we set this money aside for the administrator to use, um, I, I think that we, I would like to see an approach that is, and I think this is the intent with it, but I want to say it out loud, an approach that is universal and fair across the organization. And um, I know that certain units have already gotten, uh, you know, ample resources from what we just talked about earlier in the meeting um, through the premium pay and other parts of the organization have not. And so I think that as we approach this $4 million and what is going to happen with it, I know that some of it is already going to be dictated by pre-arranged, pre-negotiated bargaining agreements that have, that are already in existence. I know that some units don't have pre-arranged bargaining agreements that are already in existence. And then other units still have uh, have already been taken care of in some ways. And I just want to make sure that as we approach this $4 million, that everybody is being treated fairly in the organization and that we're approaching this money with that lens. And the, this, the asterix to that is one group that we didn't talk about today, which is, you know, equally important to the organization is our non-union staff. And I want to make sure that, you know, we are looking at the whole organization um, as we approach this. So, and I know that non, I mean, this is going back to premium pay, but I know that non-union staff as well as union staff put in a lot of time and hours. Um, and you know, we want to make sure that we're recognizing everybody for the work that they did. Just general statements. I'm going to vote yes on this, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking through those.
I'll keep it brief. Uh, that's the intent. And we'll do all that we can to make sure that the, the money is allocated in a way that generates value for all of the county's uh, uh, human capital.
All right. Commissioner Scott, did you have something? No, anybody else have anything on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Machewski? Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman? Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Moving along on to item H. Uh, I pulled this one, H for Hodge. So uh, what, what ended up happening with this one? This is an item that I worked with the clerk's office on. Uh, it's to support uh, Secretary Benson's budget proposal to be able to implement Prop, Prop 2. Uh, we got contacted relatively recently that that number is no longer the one that the secretary is advocating for. It's just an unrealistic number. The legislature wasn't going to go for it. So if uh, Commissioner Scott and Labar would take a friendly amendment to this to replace the 177 million number in the fourth whereas clause and in the title of the resolution with 84 million, that's all that needs to be done to it. Yeah. Sorry. All right, great. Well then, that's, that's all I got on it. Anybody want to say anything about it? Otherwise we can vote on it. It's a roll call vote. Thank you. I know, right? What would have happened? Then, yeah, yeah. We, well, you know, I put some things in this agenda, so we could do more of that, right? Like, so there's more, the next item included. Uh, go ahead.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman? Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now we're on the item I. I believe Commissioner Somerville put this. I, right.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I hold this one for separate consideration, um, because I will be voting no. Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I hold this one for separate consideration, um, because I will be voting no, and I just wanted to share why. Um, I do appreciate this resolution and many of the elements. Um, I do acknowledge that consuming tobacco products is bad for your health. Um, I just don't support prohibitions like this, um, on products. Um, I do support stronger enforcement, especially against bad actors who sell to minors, um, or people who purchase for minors. And I, I support increased efforts to deal with that, um, as well as increasing education and prevention. Um, I'm just not in support of prohibition. So I'll be voting no, but I do appreciate the intent.
All right, thank you for the appreciation. Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just acknowledging and uplifting what Commissioner Somerville just said. I think another potential issue um, that we face with a full ban is that there are numerous cultural uses of tobacco, including hookah and other uh, cultural uses that I would want to be sensitive that a full ban, um, was inclusive of. And, um, so I understand Commissioner Somerville's concerns and believe that they are valid. Um, I will be voting yes, but I believe that her concerns are very valid.
All right, anybody else? Commissioner Light?
Um, I just want to, if my, uh, commissioners could give me a little, I just want to ask a question. So would this just only, um, be ending the sale of flavored only tobacco? Um, and if so, um, I believe this is the cause for a lot of our minors and youth, um, who vape, who utilize flavored, um, items that you know, pertain tobacco. And so we have to be very conscious. Um, I have young adults in my family, uh, who have partaken, and I believe if it wasn't so appetizing, um, and delightful that they would not do so. So let's always keep in consideration our youth, um, and how we present items that are not healthy for them. Um, just keep that in mind because of the wants and needs of our pleasures is not the best thing for, um, our youth. Um, so just please keep that in mind.
All right, Commissioner Scott wants to add some context and probably say some things.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, thanks, Commissioner Light. Uh, this, just to point out, this is just a resolution urging the legislature to do that. Unfortunately, we can't do it ourselves. We would like to, so you can see that we've asked them to repeal the local preemption. And you're absolutely right that flavored tobacco is a problem in getting, um, younger people to pick up tobacco products and in particular flavored tobacco is, uh, more common and significantly higher for black and Hispanic and Latinx youth. It's often the entree into that smoking, which definitely contributes to um, higher rates of heart disease and lung disease. And so, um, as a public health measure, you know, prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products, including the menthol products, is one way that we can try to think about how we can reduce those health disparities associated with menthol cigarette use. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, before I go to Commissioner Robbie, anybody else for a round one comment? You gave around one, all right, so yeah, gotta be fair. Round two, Commissioner Robbie?
Appreciate your fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, I try.
I also like that you went with the, uh, items that we all agreed on first and then did the items that were debated.
I blew on the vibe, I mean, this is what the board likes.
Good vibe with that. Um, so I just, I just want to quickly say too, building off of what Commissioner White said. So I was on the board and I was chair of the board, I believe, when we passed our indoor vaping ban, um, and was very happy and proud to support that. I definitely think that there's, you know, some, some real serious issues that come forward with how the marketing occurs, uh, and I, and, uh, another concern that potentially the legislature could help us solve is, um, understanding what is in a vaping product, because that was an issue that came up quite a bit when we were doing the indoor vaping ban. Um, in fact, I remember we had somebody, I will never forget this, we had somebody come and testify from a shop called Mr. E's Cigarettes, um, you know, or Mr. E's Vaping, I guess. But, uh, and it was Mr. Dash E. Um, you know, a fun play on words, but I remember saying at the time, like, this is the reason why we are concerned about this, because it is a mystery, like what you're giving people. Um, and oftentimes there are, you know, like really bad compounds that are built into it beyond the tobacco side. Like, I'm not even talking about tobacco. I'm talking about all the other stuff that they put in it to make the flavors what they are. Um, and so maybe, you know, synthesizing some of what Commissioner Somerville said too, like, you know, even if the legislature were to look at more transparency around what's in the product or banning certain compounds that are not even tobacco-related chemicals that are added to vaping products, I think that even would go a long way to help, you know, preserve public health in our state. So I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying, making sure that we're, you know, watching out for our youth, because, I mean, at the end of the day, um, again, this is, you know, we're still in capitalism and people are still trying to make money and marketing to youth. They do it. They do it intentionally. That's not a mistake. So thank you for bringing that forward. And to Commissioner Scott too, for your perspective.
I mean, I have more sta- I have more statistics I can give you. Uh, just to drive the point home, if I could.
Please, I was going to do so too, so.
Just gonna talk about how too, uh, understanding that eight in ten youth, uh, who started smoking say that they started with flavored tobacco and it meant all cigarettes and menthol use is almost, is very extensively, almost exclusively, um, marketed in communities of color and low-income neighborhoods. And so there's a, there, this is just insidious. And so I, I'd be super happy if we could see the legislature doing something more here. Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else? No. Okay, well, I'm, oh, Commissioner Light, go ahead. Get your round two in here.
Going to say, let's just keep our own personal, um, wants and desires and needs out of, you know, things like this. I think this resolution and encouragement to our legislative is important. So we just gotta, like I said, look out for youth. I got two children. And I do not want them to partake. And they love fruit. They love anything sweet. Um, and now children are being introduced, um, to tobacco and anything else at a far more early age. I don't know if you've all seen on the news that there's little candies that are are other substances and what do they do? They want to have it. So let's just keep in mind that we need to encourage our legislator um, to limit or the way that we, um, market these items. So keep our own personal wants and needs away and let's be encouraging to our legislators.
All right, uh, Commissioner Somerville's back in the mix.
Follow up just for the people watching this. I want to make it clear, I don't smoke flavored tobacco products.
I don't think anybody was implying that you did.
Yeah, I just want to ba- make that clear. I, um, you know, but I do believe in people making their own personal choices and, um, being, you know, able to purchase them.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody else? No. All right. Well, since this is an item we've talked about quite a bit, and we've talked about it a lot in Board of Health, I'm going to have to throw out some more facts and figures before I go ahead and enthusiastically vote yes on this. Uh, you know, tobacco use is definitely a health equity issue, as it's already been mentioned. Uh, tobacco companies purposely advertise products like this to communities of color, uh, low-income communities, to young people particularly, and to the LGBTQ community. So it's something we really need to be looking at if we're talking about trying to promote health equity. Uh, for just some more numbers here, tobacco use kills sixteen thousand two hundred Michiganders every year. It's terrible. It's terrible. Uh, that's more than drug overdose, alcohol, auto accidents, murders, suicides, and HIV combined. So that's a, that should be startling to people. Uh, this, this is something else that's startling. Smoking-related annual healthcare costs in Michigan are five point three-three billion dollars. Uh, and it's one point four-six billion dollars for Medicaid costs just in Michigan. I, I think there's, a lot of people think that if we were to have a ban like this, uh, or even if the legislature would just get rid of the preemption and then we could have a debate about if we wanted to ban it here, that it would hurt local businesses. That's not what the research shows at all. Uh, most people, that no local businesses depending on flavored tobacco products. People would just go buy something else, right? That's not their main thing that they're doing there. Uh, this is a, this is one right here that I find particularly ironic that the, uh, and this is a, a myth that the tobacco industry tries to push out there, that if we were to ban menthol, uh, it would increase criminalization of, uh, African-Americans. Well, I mean, the irony in that is that tobacco, the tobacco industry has marketed menthol products to African-Americans. So they're saying, well, you can't ban it because, no, that's just going to hurt their bottom line. So that I, you know, that's the, another health equity issue there. Uh, a couple of other ones here specific to you, since Commissioner Light brought that up. And that was really a lot of what our conversation in Board of Health was about, as well. How do we get this out of the hands of youth? Because that's a part of the, the, the bigger challenge here. Uh, this isn't going to stop. This is like, this one policy wouldn't get, uh, just out of the hands of youth. We'd have to do a lot more than just banning the flavors. But, uh, young people, as Commissioner Light mentioned, get exposed to the flavored products and then stay, uh, on them over time. So not having access to that would reduce the likelihood that younger people would get, uh, addicted. I mean, we had a, one of our Board of Health members shared this during our meeting when we voted on the equivalent resolution during Board of Health, who has a child that said that they're addicted to flavored products. And the only way that they would stop is if they couldn't get access to them. And, you know, that's, that's really telling for what we're seeing here. Um, something else, other places have done this. Sorry, I'm going off on this one. We're almost done here. Uh, the, so the state of New York has banned flavored products. So we have case studies across the country to see how effective it is. And we've seen significant, uh, positive impact by, by banning it. So there's a good one right here. Cigarette smoking fell from twenty-seven point one percent in two thousand to two point one percent by high schoolers, but from a ban like this. Uh, so that's a pretty incredible decline. E-cigarette use for vaping dropped from twenty-seven point four percent in twenty-eight to eighteen point seven percent twenty-two. Um, so a decline. And some thinking about the enforcement piece, because that's a idea that's brought up a lot. If there was just better enforcement, that's not really working here in Michigan. Uh, we have one of the highest rates in the country of retailers selling to minors. Uh, in Washington County in particular, it looks like, uh, the FDA, on average, forty percent of the places they checked, uh, failed compliance for not selling to minors. So minors are going to buy it if they can. Yeah, that's, that's pretty good. I mean, there's all these other issues with it, myths, uh, but it's a lot of myths that the tobacco industry is pushing out. That's enough. Yeah. Go ahead. You don't know now? Okay, well, I'll read the other things that I have prepared.
I, I feel like, I don't want to, somebody else talked about beating a dead horse. I don't want to beat the dead horse.
Beat it.
But, but I'm just going to say that if you, for any young kids who are thinking about it, or people watching about it and saying like, it's not that bad. Um, if you ever come to the hospital and have to be intubated to get you off the ventilator when you're a smoker is painful um, for you and for the people taking care of you. And your lungs feel it. And, um, I'll really gross you all out now with some nurse talk, but the sputum that comes out of a patient's ET tube of somebody who smokes is really, um, alarming. And if that was ever something to convince somebody to not do it, that, that would be it. Scared straight, folks. There you go.
With that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Sanders?
Start with me, why don't you? Uh, yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Somerville?
No.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
All right. We did it. Excellent. Moving on. Report from the county, no, yeah, report for the county administrator. What you got? No report, okay. Report from the chair of the Board of Commissioners. I'll say, oh, join us for the unity walk, the DRC's unity walk this Saturday at ten o'clock, I believe it's at ten o'clock. More information on the internet. I'll stop there because everybody's ready to go. Uh, any items for current and future discussion? Whoa, uh, give it to Commissioner Scott.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I'm saying here, so people know, on the twenty-eighth of June at a time and place undetermined. But on that date, we will be having, uh, Congresswoman Dingle has arranged a meeting with the EPA um, to come and talk to us, to give us some updates about what's happening with Gelman. Um, we'll, we'll let you know when we know more information, but I, I know a lot of people uh, remain concerned about what's happening there. And second, don't forget to come to the, um, flag raising on Friday morning. And I'll miss you. But be there. Thanks.
You want to tell us why you're going to miss us?
Yes, I'm happy to tell you why. Um, I will be at the White House tomorrow night for a reception for Pride Month on the White House lawn. Um, I was thinking I wasn't going to go. And then our new board liaison was basically like, what? You're crazy. And so I hurriedly made those, uh, things tonight. And I will be taking my son with me, um, and have a lot of pride in being able to take him to something like that. And think it's fabulous that we have people in the White House who are having things like a pride picnic on the lawn, because it certainly wasn't the case a few years ago. Thanks.
When the president calls, you answer. All right. Commissioner, Commissioner Labar?
Thanks, Chair. Um, like some of you on here, I, uh, I'm on the Facebook website. And, um, I just wanted to note that there's an update or a post on the Facebook website, uh, which I feel I should recognize. Um, Chair, it's my understanding that you were recently promoted uh, to Clinical Associate Professor at the University of Michigan School of Social Work. That's my understanding based on this, uh, communique. And that you were also recognized as the twenty-twenty-three Student Union Teacher of the Year, uh, the award for that uh, great achievement. So, um, it sounded lost on me that you tried to hide this on Facebook. And so, um, I just want to say that it has been seen. Uh, but we should recognize it. And in all seriousness, congrats, Justin, well-deserved and so forth. And, uh, I hope, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. I wasn't expecting to, to be recognized for that here, but, uh, it's, yeah, thank you. And that Facebook website is really useful. Received and acknowledged, as Commissioner Robbie says. Thank you, Commissioner Labar. Really appreciate it. Uh, any, yeah.
I was just going to say for, I don't know if anybody's still watching at, uh, nine, nine seventeen, but, uh, we did get an email from the Health Department, um, about the wildfire smoke. And the fact that, uh, we are, you know, under, uh, PM two point five, which is, uh, you know, kind of the orange level. Um, and so the recommendations are that folks avoid strenuous outdoor activities, uh, walk instead of running if you can. Um, shorten the amount of time that you're active outdoors. Um, and so, you know, just folks be careful. This is obviously a big environmental crisis that we're having across, you know, eastern United States and Canada. So, um, and it, it is impacting us here, even though it may not feel like it, uh, yet. But, you know, it is, it is at a state where we need to be careful.
Thank you. Yep. Any other items for current or future discussion, friends? Seeing none. We have no pending items. All right, favor? Nine eighteen, we're out of here. Nine eighteen, we're out of here.